Just had to run. Is Amber not going to make it?
Did she might Zoom? But you didn't know in person. So we'll go ahead and get started. I know Councilman Johnson will be here shortly. And then I know Bruce had to go run somewhere. Councilmember Pollock will be joining us possibly by Zoom.
She should be on.
Oh, she's on probably. Oh, okay.
She might not be on yet, but she will.
Okay, good. All right, let's go ahead and start. We're going to start with the council meeting follow-up. Carter, do we have anything we need to follow up with from your perspective?
We certainly do have some items to follow up with, but we're relegated to item number three in that regard. So other than that, I would say, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
So let's go ahead and move to Ford Wyoming Center study.
Thank you. I appreciate it. As council is aware, we have entered into a three-way partnership with Visit Casper and OVG to conduct a study with the intention of trying to envision the appropriate perspective, if you will, or business model perhaps with regard to the Ford Wyoming Center for the next 40 years of its life. Understanding that when the Ford Wyoming Center was originally built 40 years ago, chances are the forefathers of those days did the exact same thing. And so our hope is that this gives us some insight with regards to ways in which we can envision the Ford Wyoming Center and its function, so that indeed it might perhaps be a stronger economic driver for the community than perhaps we know it to be right now. So that's the idea. That's the goal and the intent with respect to why we entered into this partnership and tried to get this study done. We are fortunate to have not only our guests from the Ford Wyoming Center here tonight, but also our consultant that helped us with this concept. And if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just be happy to defer that time to our consultants.
Sounds good. That'd be great. Consultants.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Great, hi. So I am Catherine Sarette. I'm the president of Strategic Venue Studies. As a lead consultant on this project, I'm joined by Adam Myring, who is from JLG Architects, who will also be presenting to you tonight as well. So I have a presentation. Is it something that I can share my screen? Or do you have the presentation available in front of you?
Flor, do we have the presentation or can they share?
They can share their screen.
Go ahead. You can share the screen if you'd like to.
Okay, let's see. So can someone tell me the best way to do that?
There's a little box with an arrow pointing up next to your mic. You should be able to...
Oh, yes. Okay, gotcha. Display which window. Let's see what I want to do here. So I'm going to do that. And then I will start the presentation from the beginning. Okay, how's that look?
Looks great. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So yeah, thank you for the opportunity, first of all, to work on this project and also to meet with you today to present the results. So I'll be taking this first shift for about 15 minutes to talk about the market analysis and feasibility portion of the project, and then I'll turn it over to Adam, which will be infinitely more interesting as he goes through his work on the conceptual planning and pre-design. So here's a look at the study methodology just to get started. It was broken into two phases. And throughout this project, we knew that we were tasked with three different types of events to look at. So first of all, looking at the meetings and convention market, as well as looking at sports competitions, and then thirdly, looking at the entertainment market. And so these are the steps that we use to address each of those types of events as we went through the analysis. The project began with a site visit, revealed many of the issues that you all already know about. The Ford Wyoming Center is 40 years old. It's not undergone a major renovation since its opening in 1982. It was also designed to 1980 standards and really lacks some of the modern amenities, revenue generating components that you find in a modern arena. Narrow concourses, concession stands are small and inefficient. There's a single entrance that inhibits both proper queuing and security. There's also limited premium seating, which came around in later generations. Also, that single entrance really inhibits the ability to host simultaneous events, which has really caused conflicts through scheduling and the inability to host all the events that could be possible if you could host simultaneous events. Step one of the actual analysis is looking at the market. So we looked at the drive-time markets as well as the city of Casper, Toronto County, and then the three and five-hour drive-time markets. We select these because most of the event attendees will be arriving from these markets. Obviously, we'll have some attendees that come from further away, but the majority of them will be coming from this area. So we look at different things. We look at the population, population demographics, the strength of the economy, employment, major industries. And really, what we found that while it's a small market, it's relatively stable. Median age, education level, they're on par with the rest of the state with national averages. The median household income and unemployment are also on par with what's going on in the region. Employment is fairly well diversified, although there is a high concentration of jobs in the service industry that don't necessarily create significant visitor generating meeting activity. However, there are a lot of companies in the oil and gas industry. These are some of the largest employers. And they do participate in meetings and conventions and do bring events to the market. In looking at other event infrastructure, you've got the Ramcoata Hotel, the Clarion Inn, both of which offer a mix of meeting and banquet spaces, although they do have relatively small spaces. Other facilities in the market are primarily suitable for weddings, banquets, social type events. They really don't offer the types of spaces in terms of meeting space and banquet space that would be required for, say, a conference or an annual meeting. Looking at the sports market, the Ford Wyoming Center currently offers the largest playing surface for indoor court and mat competitions. We learned during the study that there is a proposed indoor sports complex, so we did take that into consideration and got as much information as we could on that proposed venue. And that was included in our analysis. We also took a look at other visitor infrastructure in Casper, what hotels are able to serve visitors and what are the transportation options. Looking at the hotels, I like to look at that because it's obviously very important for the visitors. So there's around 25 properties. There's 2,500 rooms in the Casper market. There is a mix of brand levels. Over 30% of the rooms are in that upper mid-scale properties such as a Holiday Inn or Hampton Inn, which are favored by meeting attendees. So there is a good mix of properties that are proper for the meeting and event industry. The largest property is the 230-room Ramcoata, which is an independent upscale hotel. The next step is looking at peer venues. So this is a large part of the analysis. It really sets to inform the program recommendations as well as the demand projections and the financial operating projections. So we use these comparable or peer facilities for a lot of different uses. And in this analysis, we looked at three different sets of venues. First, we looked at competitive convention and event centers that are within a 500-mile radius of Casper. Second, we looked at comparable regional theaters and performing arts venues throughout the Northwestern US. And third, we looked at renovated civic and event centers throughout the US. And these are some of them pictured here. And the report contains four case studies, four venues that had the type of renovation that you all are considering here, taking an existing arena or civic center and adding or renovating its meeting and convention space to create a more full complex for events. So these are very similar, and the case studies are very interesting to see what their motivations were, how they financed it, and the types of events that they do host and the design elements that they went with.
Where are they?
So the four that we looked at are the Mass Mutual Center in Springfield, Massachusetts, the Rochester, the Mayo Civic Center in Rochester, Minnesota, the Tucson Convention Center in Tucson, and also the Charleston Civic Center in Charleston, West Virginia. So markets that are slightly bigger than Casper, but the venues are very similar in the type of expansion and renovation that they went through.
I just want to remind council to please address the mayor before you ask a question. Thank you.
So looking at the competitive, that first group, the competitive event convention centers, you can see that here. So this is the list we looked at. Billings, Bismarck, Rapid City, St. George, all of which are competitors of the Ford Wyoming Center. So in terms of the meeting and exhibit space that you see here, Ford Wyoming Center is one of the smallest venues in this competitive set that we looked at. On average, the competitors have around 60,000 square feet of exhibit space and around 25,000 square feet of other space, meeting and ballroom space. Half of these competitors have an adjacent or attached hotel with an average of around 290 rooms. So while Ford Wyoming Center is smaller in terms of the meeting and event space that it has available, it is, does compare favorably in terms of the seating capacity with 9,700. It is above the average in the set here. So when we looked at these venues, we didn't just look at the capacities and square footages and all of that. We also looked at the destination characteristics, things like lodging, dining, retail amenities, as well as the airlift to the communities. And again, what it shows is that Casper is one of the smallest markets in terms of the population, in terms of the other visitor amenities and infrastructure that it has, and also in terms of its airlift. So really, what this shows is that it does have a lower ability to host events than some of these larger competitive markets. And so even though they, even though Casper competes with them, you're going to compete with Billings and Bismarck and Loveland for events, it doesn't necessarily mean that you should try to emulate their facility size, just simply because there are inherent limitations to hosting events for Casper. So also very important is the type of development that surrounds a venue. And so these figures here show the types of supporting businesses that are in this one-mile radius of each of the competitive venues. Casper is the first one located on the top left-hand side. So Ford Wyoming Center is in a similar situation to several of the other venues in Billings, Grand Island, Nebraska, and also Loveland, Colorado. Similar situation, the venue is actually just outside the central business district. So you're looking at, there's no supporting businesses, lodging, food and beverage, shopping, and other entertainment within walking distance, but there is a reasonable concentration within a short drive. And so that's a very similar situation. If you look at some of the other ones like Bismarck or Provo, where the venue is right downtown, there are a lot of options within walking distance to each of those venues. And so really, what would move the needle on this is having some additional residential, commercial development in that area would also bring those types of businesses that would also support the Ford Wyoming Center in more adjacent ways versus having that short drive to those. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we looked at three types of events, the third being the entertainment issue. So here are the facilities that we looked at for entertainment. Now, these are much smaller than the Ford Wyoming Center. They are performing arts venues and theaters primarily throughout the Northwest. And here's the list of those that we looked at. So we get to the program recommendations through all of that. And here are, this first set of recommendations are for the actual meeting and convention infrastructure. So what we're recommending is a 20,000-square-foot multipurpose hall, a flexible wall system so that it could be subdivided into a variety of configurations. Public passage from this new hall to the existing arena floor so that both venues could be used for some larger events. You would have access to both. An additional 6,000-square-foot junior ballroom, also meeting room block that has a flexible wall system, again, maintaining that maximum flexibility so that you could use the full space for a ballroom or subdivided into various other configurations so that it could be used for meetings. A separate entrance lobby for this space dedicated solely for the use of this new multipurpose hall and junior ballroom, a new production kitchen that can accommodate up to 1,500-person banquet or service corridors, pantry, storage, and other items to support the food service and the operation. And then we also recommend an upgrade to the existing meeting spaces that are in the Ford Wyoming Center. Looking at the arena side, the recommendations here are expanding the arena entrance lobby, giving ample room for indoor queuing and security checks, creating a signature entrance element, relocating and reconfiguring the box office and ticket windows, widen the concourse where possible, incorporate new concession stands and points of sale, upgrade the restrooms, incorporate a concourse VIP lounge and bar with a view of the arena floor. And then from that VIP lounge, creating some club seating and other VIP boxes that have access to it, but also having that seating available for general sale when premium seating is not in use. And then also, where possible, creating additional balcony party suites. The third part, looking into the ability to expand for concerts and entertainment, perhaps maybe with a permanent stage or other acoustical improvements to the Ford Wyoming Center. The conclusion on this front is that, my feeling is that a smaller, more purpose-built performance venue is really the best option for attracting events that would come to Casper. While it's in its early stages, I learned of the work that's being done with the Lyric, which would be approximately 1,200 seats, which would be right in there with what other venues or what other cities have. And in my opinion, that really presents the best option if you want to pursue more of these touring concerts, Broadway shows, et cetera. This slide here shows that some of the demand for touring events in some of these venues that we looked at, this is a pre-COVID year, 2018, 2019. And what this shows is that both Bismarck and Billings have both of these types of venues. Billings has the Metro Park, the Berta Bear Theater, same with Bismarck has its event center as well as its auditorium. And that both of these, both of these cities have both venues, and they're both thriving. They both are attracting events. They don't necessarily step on each other's toes. And so I think that something similar could happen with Casper as well if you have the Ford Wyoming Center hosting events, as well as a different, more purpose-built performing arts center, also attracting its share of events. So then we start to look at what the operations would look like, starting with the events and attendance that would come through if you were to do the recommended expansion and renovation. First step, let's see what's going on historically. We got a lot of data from the Ford Wyoming Center staff. Four years of historical fiscal year and then this existing fiscal year, or just this one past fiscal year, we had data for that as well. So we've got some pre-COVID and during COVID data. So we've got some pre-COVID and during COVID data. You can see pre-COVID much higher. We really hit home in 2021 in that fiscal year. The entire thing was impacted by the reduced events, and same is true with the attendance. So we took that data and expanded that, given the recommendations that we are proposing. And so here you see, we look at three different elements for demand. We look at the actual number of events by the type of event. We look at the total attendance that those events are going to bring, and then we also look at the room nights that those are going to generate in the market. So different events have different room night generating capabilities. Of course, sports competitions bring a lot of people to the market that need overnight lodging, same thing with conventions and conferences, whereas banquets and social events and other types of more entertainment-driven events don't necessarily drive a lot of room nights in the market. So this is for the full expansion. We also looked at, well, what would happen if you did one or the other? What if you only did the arena? Or what if you only did the event center expansion? And that's what these two charts represent. So as you can see here, if you only did the arena renovation, those renovations were more geared toward increasing the revenue generating capabilities of the Ford Wyoming Center versus increasing the number of events that would happen there and the attendance that would be there. Whereas most of the increases in events and attendance are driven through this event and center expansion and creating this multipurpose space and additional ballroom Then, moving on to the next piece, which are the financial operations. Again, we looked at several years' worth of data that the Ford Wyoming Center presented to us in order to create a model, an operating model, moving forward, given the recommendations that we have. And so this slide shows four different scenarios. So it shows the do-nothing scenario, where you are now. You've got a, and these are all, we based all of these on 2019, which was the last full pre-COVID year, with the assumption that in the future, by the time you would build this, you would have built back up and be away from the impacts of the pandemic. So looking at around a million-dollar operating subsidy each year in this do-nothing, just continue doing what you're doing scenario. The full expansion and renovation increases that operating subsidy by around $100,000 in today's dollar. Subsidy increase is mainly due to the cost of operating and maintaining this larger facility and the greater costs of participating in the meeting and convention industry, which generates economic activity in a community, but it is often at the cost of operating losses for the hosting facility. But the increased costs are partially offset by the revenue generated by the arena improvements. So if you only do the arena improvements, you're looking at decreasing the operating subsidy by around $470,000. So you've got a lot of things working here. You've got increases based on being more active in this meeting and convention industry and operating facility that is in that industry. And then you've got, you know, the benefit of the decreasing, increased revenues decreasing the subsidy if you do the arena renovation because of the premium seating, the increased points of sale, which would improve food and beverage sales, and the ease of operation if you just do the arena renovation. The next and final step is looking at the impacts on the community. So we look at the economic impacts, which are the dollars brought into the community primarily from visitors, and also the fiscal impacts, which are the actual tax dollars collected by the local markets, the local governments. This slide just shows a brief explanation of how that all comes about. The primary drivers of impacts are the spending from visitors and also the venue revenues. I will point out that in the analysis, any sort of spending that's from local residents or any venue revenues that would be transferred, say, from a different venue, those are already in the market and those are removed from the impact. So any sort of local spending is not included. You take the gross direct inputs, you put them into IMPLAN, which is the model that I used. It's an input-output model based on the specific market. In this case, it was on the county. And you put those into it. It removes some for retail margining and making some assumptions as far as non-local purchases that would be made. And it spits out your impacts, your net direct, your indirect and induced impacts, which are commonly referred to as the multiplier effect, and also some numbers on employment. From those numbers, I generated the fiscal impacts or the taxes collected by the local government. And the results of that are that this full renovation and expansion program would increase the, would contribute around $11.5 million to the local economy. I want to point out that the impacts that are shown here are incremental for the proposed expansion and renovation. So they don't represent the full impact that the Ford Wyoming Center has on the local economy. That was not part of this study. So these would be incremental. If you do this, it would be this much more of an impact. So $11.5 million annually, in today's dollars, that would be a result of this full renovation translates to around $230,000 in local tax impacts, around 100 jobs, around $3 million in labor income. If you do just the arena improvements, while it does improve the subsidy, it really does not do much to move the needle in terms of the economic impacts. So that's a much lower number. You're talking about arena improvements that are creating events, that are still bringing in local residents, not so much bringing in events that would bring in the visitation and the overnight stays and the spending in the local market. Most of that is from this event center expansion. You can see that that number is almost all of the full renovation expansion impacts. So that concludes my section. I can...
Let me see if there's any questions for you.
Stop sharing?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, if you have a question, please.
There might be a couple of questions, so I'll give that.
Sure.
Yeah, counsel and camera.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. I found it very, I liked reading through the study. It's cool to see what the, you know, potential vision could be for the event center. I thought I remembered seeing in your study that the cost of the total expansion and renovation was over $100 million, but I don't remember seeing a breakout of just the arena expansion. Could you tell me what the projected costs are of Jesse Arena renovations?
So the costs will be addressed with what Adam's speaking to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
I'll get into it.
Yeah, go ahead, Adam.
And probably best if I just start with the whole design, and then we can go into the cost secondarily.
Yeah. If there are any other questions on the market and feasibility side of it, or else we can just get into...
I don't see any other questions right now.
Okay, great. Adam, we've taken away.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name's Adam Miring. I'm a senior project manager with JLG Architects, and I work in our sports and entertainment studio. So just wanted to start by thanking you all for your time today. This was a very exciting project for us to work on as a team. We, when we got out to the site and saw what you have there, you know, you've got a building with great bones and a lot of opportunities to enhance it and bring it into the next generation. So we thank you for that opportunity. So I've condensed this package down, basically just hit on the high points. I'll try to go quickly here, but happy to answer any questions. As you're all familiar, you have a very expansive site and a lot of nice topography to work with. We love the sighting up above the city, so we'll get into some of our thoughts about that. But here's a quick and large site plan. So we took the recommendations from Catherine and started working with that. And really, we found that the event center ideally would go to the north here, or planned north, and that was the logical spot for that. The existing building, obviously, you have your main entry side and then your service side. So this is just a glimpse of what the plaza and entry feature could look like. And then getting into the actual Ford Wyoming Center, this plan's got a lot going on here, but we broke out the scope into basically four main parts per Catherine's recommendations. The main entry, what we're calling the concourse improvements, and that's basically wrapping around to enhance the concessions and restrooms for the guest experience. And a third item we're looking at is, we call the city view side, basically this right side of the building where you have the existing Rockstar balcony, looking at expanding that and enhancing that for additional ancillary uses and revenue options. And then the event center is basically its own standalone item to the, off to the side of the existing Ford Wyoming Center, but linked for connection. So starting with that main entry, here's a simple rendering of what we think that could look like, really expanding it, centralizing it, and making it a grand feature. One thing we noticed when we pulled up to the building is really the building lacks a front door. It's, there's some wayfinding and signage that got us to where we needed to go, but it's really not prominent as an out-of-towner coming to site. We noticed that. So this is really what's, something to grab your attention and draw you into the building. Here's a quick image of what that entry lobby could look like, greatly expanded, open space, high ceiling, very modern with competitive arenas of this type. And you'll notice off to the right side of this image here, we're proposing opening it up to the arena itself. One thing we see with modern arenas now is they're not, they're not so enclosed like they were 40 years ago. A lot of the modern-style arenas are open to the outside with glazing and other openings right up to the concourse, so that would be a new feature. And here's just the opposite side view, looking out towards that, so you could walk right in the front door, right out to a balcony, and look down to the event floor. And here's a view from the inside, just seeing what that balcony could look like, your new main lobby and entrance off to the distance. And up above, you can see the start of what we're calling the premium club level, which we see that as part of the main entrance scope, since it's all kind of combined. So here's a plan of that club level. So here's your main entry on the far left, that high-ceiling area, which you can look down to the lobby from the main club level. And then flanking it on each side is private suites, so we have four private suites here. But right up from center, looking into the bowl of the arena, we have the club seating, which what we're finding from many owners and venues around the country is that's the premium seat everyone's going towards, not so much the private suites, it's more the club level. So in some ways, similar to your Rockstar balcony, but on this side of the building, it would be perfectly situated for most of the events that Ford Wyoming Center has. Another additional feature is just a large lounge area up there. So again, this is a feature that's very common with arenas these days, and it'd be an amenity to everyone on this premium level. This level would be fully self-contained, so your premium guests, once they're up to this level, they'd have their own restroom facilities, they'd have their own concessions, bar, everything they'd need to enjoy the event. Moving over to what we're deeming the city side, we have a similar concept over there with another lounge above the Rockstar balcony, which I'll get into shortly here. This is just another zoomed-in plan of that premium club level, just to show all the pieces in there. And here's an image of what it could look like, centralized bar, overview, looking down to see all the guests arriving through the main entry, another view of that. And here's your view down to the event floor. So the building offers some great volumes that we can work with and add to this club level without any issues. It'd be very competitive with the brand-new, modern arenas out in the market. Here's a view of those private suites, just tucked into the two sides. Again, they'd have great views of the event. We're showing two different sizes. There's, on the furthest out suites, there's some mechanical space in the corner that we were able to wrap around and have an even larger suite with more seating area. And there's what your suite view of the event floor would look like. So as I mentioned, the Rockstar balcony side, what we saw as one of the greatest opportunities of your site is that perch above the city and really some views that weren't fully taken advantage of when the building was initially constructed. So that's what this is proposing, is basically opening up that wall and building an outdoor terrace as an additional amenity. And we fully understand how windy it is in Casper, so we're showing a windscreen so you could maximize usage out there as much as possible. But in the arena and entertainment world today, an amenity like that, those outdoor terraces, is highly sought after, and we're seeing it all over the country. So we thought we just had to propose that as an option. And there's the great view showing what it could look like. So again, this really got us excited. I know it's not exactly in Catherine's recommendation, but we feel strongly that this is something that, for a minimal cost, could be monetized in several ways. Again, this is a planned view of it. One thing that we're including with it is expansion or extension of the existing Rockstar balcony, making this again another premium space with lounge, opening up the concourse to that. And then, as I mentioned before, having a separate upper-level lounge as an option. We understand that there's a scoreboard, or, yeah, your big scoreboard screen up there right now. So in this rendering, we're proposing you could split it and have two on each side flanking it, but lots of opportunity there for, especially when you have your larger events like the rodeos that literally do fill up seats on all 360 degrees. And that's a view from the upper level of the Rockstar balcony. So here is just a section cut through the building, really showing you the additions. So large main entry, lobby addition with your premium level above it, and then also opening up on that side to look down towards the city. Getting into the events multipurpose building, here's another section, you know, cutting through the opposite direction, just showing our event spaces, the three divisible... just showing our event spaces, the, the three divisible 20,000 square foot convention space, and then the smaller ballroom linking up to the existing building. And so that's what we're envisioning it looking like from the outside. Again, we had, we had a lot of fun designing this. This is just a concept of what it could look like. But, you know, trying to be as competitive, class competitive of any type of convention event building in the nation today. And here's a quick plan view of that multi-purpose event building. So we, we've situated the ballrooms, the much smaller portion closest to the Fort Wyoming Center. And that is a couple of reasons, but the primary one was just so we could scale the larger portion of the building further away, so we didn't have too large competing building masses. And secondarily, it, it's created a nice pocket for a second entrance here. So this building, although linked, which is this far left side here, it can operate completely independent. You could seal off the doors between the Fort Wyoming Center and the events building and have two private events or two separate events, excuse me. And likewise, you, you have multiple spaces inside this building, so you could run multiple events at the same time. On the right side, we have the three main halls. We're showing loading doors into the halls on the far right side. So you can have any type of convention that you can bring in, you know, any, any type of truck backing up to the door and, and bring in an auto show or whatever. Want to give you maximum opportunity here. This darker gray box along the backside, this is a central service corridor. And included in that, we have space for a, a large kitchen, able to service banquets in this building as well as support the existing Fort Wyoming Center. It's all, you know, back of house behind the door, so it's, it's, it's got maximum functionality. And along the bottom of the page here, we have a, a large circulation gathering space outside the hall. So again, you can, you can have your events in the hall and during a break time or, or pre-function, they, you can use that space, maximize it for, for multiple events at the same time. As well as it, it is all also facing towards that city. So adding a lot of glass there, so you can look down towards the city, take advantage of those views. Back in the site plan, I failed to mention it, but we're showing a terracing of the, of the site down. So you could even add additional amenities down the road, you know, amphitheaters or, or other things that, that we were dreaming up as we were designing this. So overall, what we feel is a ton of opportunity here. Really exciting to, to work through this design. So here's that terracing I mentioned. That's a backside view, but opening it up with all the glazing. And we have several views in our, in our design package. The, the team really enjoyed working on these designs and, and showing what, what it could look like. Here's a, one interior of the vents building, just showing, showing that circulation lobby space pre-function. So designed very roomy, but that's, you know, what we're seeing with these type of spaces that, that pre-function's almost as important as the actual event floor itself. And that, that concludes the design portion. Heard the question about budget. So we do have a budget assumption that we put together. This is done, JLG has in-house cost estimators. Do add the caveat that we're not contractors and, and these are, these are just assumptions based on what we're seeing in the current market. So they're, they're certainly not validated with, you know, by a contractor or anyone that, that could go build it today for this. But they'll get you ballpark. So we did break it out into the four main, main areas that we mentioned. And, and through some assumptions at it, which got us to some square dollars, cost per square foot figures here. So what we're seeing is, as the main entry premium seating addition, all told, it's, it's almost little under 18,000 square feet of construction. There's a lot of expensive work to undertake that one. So we're, we're seeing that as a, over a thousand dollars per foot addition as, as we've designed it, which can certainly be scaled back, but we see that as a $21 million addition. Concourse improvements, I, I didn't get into that too much, but we're, we're proposing basically rebuilding and expanding all concessions and restrooms on the main concourse of the, the two main sides. That, that we looked at as a close to a $6 million cost. City view side, a lot of the infrastructure is actually already there for that terrace, just decking over what's, what's already there pretty much. Expanding the Rockstar balcony, again, that's not too complex. Adding the second premium level above it would be a little bit more. But when our estimators went through that, they, they saw that as a just shy of 7 million. 6.75 is what they're putting on that. And then the multi-purpose events building, that one is entirely new construction. A little bit easier for us to put our finger on it, but what we're seeing for those type of buildings is, is a little over 500 square foot these days. So that's just coming in right under 37 million. So for construction costs, we're, we're seeing this all in as at about 70 million, or 70.5 million. And that's today's dollars. That did not include site improvements, so we do know that there's going to have to be some, some reworking of your site to just accommodate this, this work. So this is a, a smaller placeholder of 600,000. We understand that there's that additional events building happening in the outlot and, and other parking and vehicular circulation issues there. So there, there's definitely more work there that we didn't price into this. And then knowing that the building has some issues, you know, aging infrastructure and, and other deferred maintenance that, that does need to happen and would logically happen with any kind of alteration and addition. We, we put a 15% number at that. So that's, you know, another 10.6. Contingency just early on in, in this design phasing, this is all concept work and, and high-level guesstimating right now. So that's what that 15% is. Yeah, as, as we proceed into design, additional design phases, that number would go down. And then escalation, I'm sure everyone is feeling the inflation right now and it's, construction is no different. So the last couple of years have been very bad. We're, we're starting to hear that's going to hopefully even out and, and be a little bit more, more level, I hope. But just to be safe, we threw 15% for a fall 2024 start. And that's, that's assuming we would start on design in 2022 and get everything through permitting and started by the fall of 2024. So on top, taking the 70.5 and adding everything else, which is, you know, over 40 million, that gets us to a construction cost of 113 million. So that is, it might sound like a large number, but really the, the point I'd like to drive home is we could not rebuild the existing Fort Wyoming Center you have today for 100 million dollars. Not a chance. We're working on, on similar buildings, much smaller, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 seats that are going 50, 60, 70 million dollars today. So like I opened, you, you have a great facility there. It's, it's great bones. What, what was built 40 years ago is, was a very good building. And it's just, it, it needs some help, but we can easily make that a modern, very competitive and, and a good facility to last the next 40-plus years. So, and then just rounding out, construction costs are one thing, but there's all kinds of soft costs to, to cover. So we, we, we just threw a 20% swag at the soft cars. So that's another 20-plus million, just to cover all the different fees and, and everything for, that, that it would take to get the building done. So again, these are, these are just guesstimates at this time, but can always be refined as future design phases proceed.
I do have some questions from council. Council member?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for the additional information. When you spoke earlier about, so there's three essentially options, full expansion and renovation, arena improvements only, event center expansion only. Could you please clarify for me, the arena improvements only, is that main entrance and premium seating? Or would that just be the premium seating? And if so, is there a breakdown between? So I saw it was 20 million dollars for main entrance and premium seating. Is there a breakdown between the two? Thank you.
So we, we lumped it all together as, as a single entity, main entry and premium seating. Part of the design that we conceptualized for the premium seating, if, if you don't do the main entry, it would, it would be different, it would scale back a little bit. But I, I think you can, you can just throw a rough number that, you know, half of that cost is your main entry and half of it is your premium seating.
Yeah, and the, the first part of your question, so Adam and I were working simultaneously on this. So I didn't have the, the four things broken down. So I did not break down the premium seating entrance and the concourse improvements. To me, those were one, one thing in the arena improvements when I was looking at the, the operating aspects of it.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Okay, I don't think there's any other questions. Carter?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our, our request really is just for you to take this in as information. Certainly I would expect that you're probably going to want to consume the data more and look at the reference material and that kind of thing. We have some information consistent with tonight's presentation that we're going to get to you as well. And, and basically what I'd like to do is be able to come back at some point, if you've had the chance to consume this and think about it and so on, to consider more specific recommendations versus, hey, do you want to do the 113 million tonight? Kind of approach, because that is not what I'd want to try to put in front of you, if you will. So anyway, information only, I don't need any direction, but we would like to come back and talk with you again.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. It was very, very in-depth, we appreciate it.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much, take care.
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bruce?
I just want to be clear to the public that this was something that was brought to us by Brooke, I believe, at Visit Casper to have a look at the center to see if there's something we could do with it. No way, no how are we talking about spending 113 million dollars or doing anything to it, actually, at this point. I just want to make sure that people don't think the council's looking to spend money on it, on it yet, because that's certainly not the case. That isn't how this came about.
Good point, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Carter or staff? Okay, thank you. Moving along. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Did they get a copy of our agenda? Only 20 minutes.
One cent funding moving forward. I do want to also let you know that I did some follow-up with some counsel from the Natrona Collective, Natrona Health Collective, and also chatted with some of our staff, or our city attorney, and did some research. And so it would seem that I am okay to move forward and be here, to be a part of that conversation, don't have to recuse myself. So just wanted to let you know, and making that decision. And I know John had given me some good advice on some questions to ask and looking to it and felt, felt comfortable that I don't need to recuse myself from this. All right, one cent funding, Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have some presentations queued up for council to hear. Certainly the nonprofits have asked Ms. Wilcox to come in and visit with you again. And we have also asked pursuant to feedback from you to hear from Ms. Emery from the Trails Trust and Ms. Summerall Wright from the Housing Authority. And so they've each been indicated a 10-minute space, if you will, to occupy with you tonight. And then following those presentations, we have follow-up from a data gathering standpoint as well that you have asked us for, and, and we'd like the opportunity to be able to share that with you tonight. And hopefully pursuant to what potentially could culminate in an alternative proposal to consider, council could direct us with respect to moving forward with regard to a spread, if you will, that would help us to put together a resolution that ultimately we'd ask for your formal approval of. And so if council, however, would like more homework done, we also would be open to that direction, of course, from you this evening as well. So you've got a couple of directions you can go tonight. Certainly I do feel an obligation to share with you some homework follow-up, if you will, and hopefully you'd be open to that. Otherwise, we do have three guests with us here tonight to, to visit with you.
Do we start, we can start the guests?
That would be my request, yes, sir.
Perfect, absolutely. So council, what is your pleasure? Do we want to start with Anna, do we want to start with Trails or Housing Authority?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Anna, do you care if we start with you?
Of course, thank you. Where would you like me? I don't want to be.
Right up front there.
Sorry, I'm hearing things. Thank you again for having us. I'm Anna Wilcox of the Wyoming Nonprofit Network. I'm representing a number of currently funded nonprofits, many of whom joined tonight from the next room. I wish I had them here backing me for support. I don't know if we can get a head count out there so that you know just how strong the support was for each of them to attend tonight. We'd like to share additional gratitude. You guys gave so much time over the last seven days to every single one of us who sent an email, requested a meeting, sent a letter, et cetera, opening that line of communications with the nonprofits who will ultimately be impacted by your decision tonight or in the future. Our hope is that these meetings, communications and sharing of documents have provided an understanding of the wide variety of essential services provided by nonprofits that would change our community's landscape if they cease to exist or if their current service levels were decreased due to a significant change in funding. Having been a part of a funding arm of our community myself for the past four years, I solidly understand the difficulty of determining the how-muches and the whos. And I also recognize that you're never looking for somebody to put all of their eggs into your basket. And you never want somebody to assume that dollars that came this year are entitled to be given in the future. However, I think that However, I think that there's a much bigger picture to that. Um, it's just not that cut. Brian, I would love to be able to share that with you. Um, the decrease in available funding, um, is not just no longer receiving a check from the city for most of these organizations. In many cases, these funds received from local entities such as the city, the county, or local community foundations are required to apply for or even qualify for other funding that comes from outside of our community. Um, the leveraged funds are oftentimes larger than anything that they are seeing from an entity such as the city and are actually much more detrimental. Um, in addition, Casper's nonprofit network of providers is strong and they work hard to support each other, um, and, and use each other's services rather than duplicating services. So, one of the many organizations sitting out here or who receive funding from the city, losing access to funds and subsequently having to shift resources or reduce services can trickle down and ultimately impact four, five, or more agencies as well. Um, many people also wanted it to be noted that in some cases, organizations are not seeking a continuous funding. They're looking for capital. It's a one-time purchase. It's a kickoff of a new program or a new service. Those folks don't come back and ask again. Um, but if an opportunity like this should go away during this cycle, there's a fear or risk that that sets a precedent for the next six to eight people who are sitting here at your table, um, who might not be as keen and thoughtful as yourselves. Um, so, once again, we end with a request and I did get the agenda, so I'm actually gonna keep it under ten minutes and hope that if anybody had any questions, we'd have time for that as well. As you move forward and continue to discuss, we hope you will sharpen your pencils, find a way to continue funding with a nonprofit bucket at the same level as at least the last four-year cycle. We hope that these discussions have also opened a door to a more strengthened partnership, uh, moving forward in your process as to how these dollars are being distributed. Everyone here represented is a leader in the community as well, as well as a leader and an expert in their field. We are more keen, uh, to the awareness of our community's needs. Our positions on the front line of serving these needs in our community make us an invaluable resource. That's an invaluable resource to you. So, our final plea is that you please use us for this process and any processes moving forward, or just in general knowledge, day-to-day, of what nonprofits are doing and what's happening, um, what the overall climate in our community is. Thank you.
Questions? Yeah, Bruce?
More for Carter. So, some of, some of the nonprofits are obviously, uh, I don't wanna say more important, but they're more prevalent, relevant in our community than others, yet we're being asked to allocate a specific amount of money to, just to nonprofits in general. So, how is that vetted? How is, how does that money get let, I guess, is the question?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I, I appreciate the question. Um, I, I think to, to put it in terms that, that I would suggest, uh, with respect to what ultimately will have to be your decision-making process that you go through to determine which, uh, relationships you're gonna have with nonprofits and which ones you won't. Um, my suggestion would be, a- as it relates to, um, resonance with the city, that, that indeed, there are nonprofits that, uh, leverage the city's services further than others. I mean, that's just a harsh reality. There, there are some nonprofits that while their presence in the community make the community better and stronger and so on, they aren't necessarily tied to the services that the city extends and, and therefore, that relationship might not, uh, be as acute. The second part of your question, I would say, uh, is that, uh, you actually get to determine the filters by which the applications you would receive, if that's the route you decide to go, um, would be vetted. So, if you have criteria that undoubtedly you would communicate with staff and, and ultimately, the nonprofit partners potentially, you would identify what criteria are important to you that would help you make decisions as to which partnerships to engage and relationships to, to not engage, moving forward. And, and, you know, at the end of the day, that really was how current relationships and previous relationships were put together.
Follow, you bet.
Thank you. Um, so, the emails I received and the conversations I've had have led me to believe what I was told. The reason that the nonprofits are so low on the scale, I believe it was fourteen out of sixteen, they were that far down, is because some of them aren't perceived as a value to the community by the taxpayer. But when they're all lumped into one, it's dragging them all down into that spot. And so, it seems to me if we were to discern better which ones are more deserving of that funding, which ones actually do good for our community, which, then I think you, we'd see that number rise in a, in a, um, the survey, excuse me. So, unfortunately, we have one big blob and some of them deserve it and some of them don't. And I think the ones that don't are kinda pulling everything down. And that's why we're seeing in our survey, these guys are so low on the priority scale. And we, you know, we are, I think, charged to probably follow that to a point because that's what our constituents are telling us to do. But I don't know that it's being entirely fair to some of the ones that are very deserving. Is that making any sense to you, what I'm trying to articulate?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, and, and I'll, I'll be the first to admit, uh, surveys, albeit, you know, more scientific than just simply doing opinion polls, uh, are not always perfect. And without a doubt, that could be a legitimate concern, particularly from the nonprofit community, with respect to, uh, where they may have placed on the survey. I, I, it's hard for me to disagree with that. I- in the same token, it, it's also hard to, uh, take the position that the data that you got back from the community is, is, is worthless. And I, and I know you're not saying that. I'm not trying to suggest that. But trying to find the balance with respect to what the community has indicated in a, in a sample size of which is, is certainly statistically very sound, can be tricky, without a doubt. But in the same token, I think when you, when you have those concerns about the survey, you also potentially would have to have some concerns about what the community identified as the highest priorities. And, uh, that presents challenges as well. So, it, it is a balance. It is tough to find that balance sometime. And, uh, data collection isn't, isn't perfect. But, uh, in the past, it's been a pretty reliable resource to, to, to look at.
Amber, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to give you update. We just had Anna, uh, give her real quick presentation on that, so we're kind of in that phase.
Thank you. I, I was on YouTube. I did get to hear her, um, her presentations.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Other questions for Anna? Yeah, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of this funding that your groups are asking for, how much of that is actually capital versus day-to-day salaries and operating expenses?
I wish that I could share that data with you. Um, I do not have that prepared. However, the document that we sent through, um, Thursday evening, I believe, of last week with a link, had each individual organization sharing what they received that funding for in the past and how much that funding was. My guess, my educated guess, would be that some of those folks will ask for similar funding. Some of them may ask for completely different funding, so I don't think it would be fair to even base, um, specifics on that last four years of funding, 'cause many of those organizations' needs may have changed between now and then. So, in the previous cycle, um, it was an application process. So, they were able to share very specifically what their needs were, how much those needs, or how many dollars were needed to cover those needs. And then, the council was able, the council and the city, rather, were able to determine how much of that would be fulfilled. I cannot guarantee that those would be the same needs in a second four-year cycle.
Uh, Jen Dyer sent that document out to us, um, Thursday, I think, if everybody had a chance to look it over.
And I know not everyone was able to get in there al- also in a timely fashion before he received it. So, I would've felt, would've been unfair to calculate some of those dollars and not have that be fully encompassing. But I do believe that's something that we could get if that would be important to your conversation.
Very much so. Carter had a follow-up real quick to Steve.
Thank you, and, and thank you for the question, councilman. Um, Anna, one of the comments that you made in your remarks here just a few minutes ago was with regard to, uh, those who are seeking capital would likely not be coming back for another shot at capital requests and so on. Did, do you mind, uh, clarifying what you meant by that?
Just that in, in, uh, clarifying the difference between somebody asking for operating funds is more likely to continue to ask for operating funds as they've worked that into their budget, whereas an, a capital ask has a more finite, we asked for a building, you helped support the building, here's the building. Um, so, the likelihood that they're coming back for that same support is much less. Um, and in most cases, that exact agency may not even come back in the next cycle to ask, um, as their operations are taken care of and they don't have a new capital project.
Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Anna, for being here to represent everyone out in the other room. Uh, I haven't been out there since the meeting started, but there was a lot when I walked in, so, um, uh, glad to see all the support, even if it's mostly in spirit right now, the door closed and everything. But, um, I guess that was, I did have a chance to look through the document that Jen Dyer, uh, sent us last week. And I guess that was one observation I made, was that it did seem like, um, several of those nonprofits had been using or had applied for one cent funding for the use of, uh, paying employee wages, paying for office space, um, programming, scholarships, um, wages, employee wages. Um, and I guess that stuck out to me because it does state on the city's website that it, uh, one cent has, uh, historically been used exclusively for capital. From the city's, uh, point of view, we're using it all for capital. It's all streets, water, sewer, um, equipment. And, um, uh, so I guess that would be definitely something that I would wanna make sure that, uh, we are sustaining into the future is this focus on the capital and not, uh, uh, you know, getting us into a relationship with nonprofits where we're covering their annual operating expenses and developing that dependency between us. Uh, I'd like, very much like to see that prof, uh, that funding go towards more of the one-time capital expenses that allows these nonprofits the opportunity to expand their programs and services, hire more people and stuff. But, um, that's the obstacle that they're overcoming, not just funding their agency on an annual basis.
Yes, okay. Um, so, one, I would say that, um, operating funds, uh, are much easier to leverage and to match. And so, most of those community matches that are required are going to be going towards operations and programming, which, um, outside of the nonprofit world, oftentimes, someone will look at staff as, uh, the same as utilities and keeping the lights on. In most of the cases with nonprofits, that staff is actually considered part of their programming or their services, which I, uh, in the nonprofit world, like to differentiate from, uh, general operations, programming, and then you do have your capital. Um, capital is less likely to be able to be matched and/or leveraged. Um, but I also would say that in the previous cycle, I think that, um, it was opened up to that. Um, rather, I don't believe that nonprofits came in and it was said, "What can we do for capital?" And the nonprofit said, "Nothing, but give us operating." And so, um, without speaking out of turn or sounding negative, but I feel like that's something, as you guys are having these discussions, that if, if you're setting those goals and you're setting those standards for the city to move forward with in the future, and if that is going back to how it was initially stated, I think that that would be respected, um, uh, through the asks or the requests that come from, uh, those nonprofits in the future.
Lisa?
So, question for Carter. Um, in the original bylaws of, of the one cent, when it was originally passed way back when, is there something in there stating, like, how much did they divide up, like, nonprofits or capital versus all of that?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, um, that would be a fantastic Easter egg to find. Unfortunately, not really. There, there've been resolutions over the, the, the previous cycles, obviously, we're up to seventeen now, that have, uh, you know, laid out what the council's desires are for the use of the funds, but not really any governing, um, uh, information that defines the legislative intent that, that we could find. We, we can keep looking and keep working on that. So, over the years, we've had iterations of how these dollars would be used. The city of Casper has, has pretty well used it for, for capital, uh, for the most part, with, with the exception of very specific uses that, that the councils of the day have identified.
Right.
Uh, swimming subsidy, subsidy, for example, is one of those ideas that we found has been in existence since at least the one cent thirteen cycle, by the way. For the littler towns, um, as near as we can tell, that has always been a general fund supplement and, and not really only exclusively dedicated to, uh, capital. My understanding is that, that the county has some of that type of use as well. And so, it, it would almost appear that the city of Casper is, is nearly unique, if, if you will, in, in using it, uh, for capital.
Okay, so, follow-up. So, do you know, have we always funded a small portion towards nonprofits?
Mr. Mayor, uh, councilman, it would certainly appear that nonprofits have had partnerships and relationships with the city through one cent for quite a while. I would say, community projects, for example, while maybe not operationally based, uh, have been in existence since, since the mid-eighties. So, you know, buildings, the senior center, for example, and so on. Um, operations and so forth, I am probably less equipped to be able to provide real specific clarification in that regard.
John, then Bruce.
Okay. I have, like, a multiple point, point. I hope I'll be coherent. Um, I think, I guess, you know, based on my professional experience and what I've learned about, you know, working in both grant-seeking organizations and not a grant-making organization, but an organization that is endowed, therefore, doesn't have to raise money to pay for my own job, um, I think it's just, it's, it's a type of existence in a professional setting that you will never fully understand unless you've been in that position on your own. And I think the effort and the exhaustion that can come from having to continually raise money, not only to serve dire and important and significant needs in your community, but to also demand and make the case continually for why you should exist in that position is, is not something to under-recognize or to take for granted. And, um, and so, I think that, you know, when it, when we think about what operations money, I mean, that kind of money is so hard to get. Um, it's like, it's like gold, because once your job is covered, you can go do the job you're there for. Um, and I think that if we're thinking about process and we're thinking about strategy and how this money can get incorporated into meeting our city-level objectives, I think that maybe there's a way for us to think about partnerships with certain organizations that we see as forming crucial services to our community that are in line with our goals that maybe are worth developing more longer-term partnerships with that can include some of those overhead costs, those operating costs, because we see that as a vital component of, of meeting our community's needs. And then, maybe there's another approach that is more oriented toward capital. Um, and there are, you know, project by project. I mean, every funder wants to see an outcome. So, it's great to give money and say, "Here's a building. Look what we did with our money." Um, but there are humans who are a part of that strategy, who are a part of making the case for why that matters. And, and so, honestly, if I were a grant maker, I would love to just give operating expenses all the time because I understand how important that is. Um, and so, I just, I think it's really easy to get caught into the cycle of capital. But when we're talking about this entire different sector that operates so differently from the rest of the world and from the for-profit sector, I just, I think that that conversation really has to have nuance. And please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but I, I think for me, it, it really comes back in, to our strategy. And, you know, what are the goals that we're wanting to see? What are we trying to? wanting to see? What are we trying to achieve in our community as a council? What can the city do? How can we partner with these organizations that can extend our reach, that can, we can fill some of our potholes, but we also understand where the gaps are in our police, um, force, you know, enforcement, and, and, and just thinking about this more comprehensively and, and in a complex manner. Um, I think we would really benefit, you know, our constituents and our people if we can do that. Um, and I also think that it's important to think about capital, but if the city has been funding, um, you know, some of these costs, then it's on us to make that decision and, and enforce it, or change our perspective and approach, um, in terms of the strategy we employ there. So, a lot of thoughts, not really a question, um, but I, I just, I actually think that those operating costs are really important. And I think if we're in the position to be able to build partnerships around that, um, in a strategic manner, then, um, I'd really like to be a part of figuring out how to do that. So.
Bruce.
Thank you. I, I'm a little opposite of you on that, simply because we don't look at their books, we don't know what their salaries are. They could be overpaid, we wouldn't have any idea. But when we're letting taxpayer money, it's a whole nother ballgame. And without getting into those salaries, you know, we tout ourselves as a capital, One Cent community. That's what we use it for. And so, it seems almost irresponsible for us touting capital expenditures to turn around and give that money to someone else that's using it for salaries or wages, without at least us being in their books and seeing what their wages are and what their salaries are. And I know some people are gonna say, well, that's going a little far. Well, it's really not. When we're giving you taxpayer money, we are entitled to and should know where that money's going. And it just seems like an oxymoron almost to me to say, we're using it for capital, but we're gonna give three million of it to you guys and you can do, use it for wages or whatever you want. That doesn't seem responsible, it doesn't seem appropriate. And so, I don't know if that's our decision to make. It seems like that decision was made a long time ago, that, that it was, we were gonna use it for capital. So, why then in turn would we give it to someone else and allow them to use it for wages or whatever they want? That doesn't make any sense. And that, I'm wondering if that isn't part of the reason why they're so far down on the chart. And I wouldn't mind seeing some of those salaries, the taxpayer money is funding. It, it, it's, there's just so many, you know, little sparklers in the air about it, that, um, hmm, that's just my thought. I mean, it's, and I'm not opposed, by the way, to supporting, uh, nonprofits. I'm not opposed whatsoever, but they give private funding. I know when the government, the federal government, when they gave out PPE money to private business, it had a tag on it, and it was only to be used for your employees and for their wages. That, but it was specified. So, if we're gonna say, and tell our constituents that we need you to pass One Cent and it's gonna go to capital, and then give it to somebody else and allow them to use it for wages, it just doesn't seem to jive.
Flair, uh, just a point of clarification. When we were doing that, 'cause I know, I've been, this is my third time doing this, we've had the opportunity to, they do a presentation, they say, here's our, here's our budgets, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're gonna utilize it for. Because they have, that's what they're telling us before we, when we make that decision. Because we go through the whole process, and I know Sean's been through it with me, and I know Steve went through it. And they do their presentation, they say, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're gonna do with it, um, and this is what we're gonna use the funding for, if it's gonna be for operations or it's gonna be for, they're pretty upfront saying this is gonna be for salaries, et cetera, et cetera. They do come up pretty upfront, if I'm correct, in saying that. It's been four years since I've done this, but.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I guess what I, my point is, Bruce, is what I'm saying is that I think they do, and so, when they go through the process of however we deem to make the, make the application process, 'cause it was different two times I've done it before, we kind of do it a little bit differently, but, um, we can create however we want that to look like. So, let's say we do, uh, we all want to allocate the, the grant program, we can say, we wanna see this, we wanna see this, and on top of that, here's the reporting, what we want. I think what, what'll need to be is how we wanna create that, you know, once we do those things. I think Jai was kind of alluding to that, to say, what does that look like? And how do we want them reporting it? And what do we want them to do? That's all up to us, and how we can give direction to the staff to say, this is what we want. So, let's say we are okay with operations, and we're saying, okay, yeah, do it, but we wanna see this, and tell us how it's tied to a, a measure. How are you measuring this? You know, if you're gonna have a grant program, tell us some measures, then. How are you gonna do this type of stuff? If that makes sense.
As a follow-up, if I may.
You bet.
Just, um, I, I'm not saying money shouldn't be for some salaries and, and for operational costs. Um, if you take a, say, I don't know what our youth crisis center is, like, I haven't met with those folks yet, but I'm assuming they have a lot of counselors, and that they help these children in our community through crisis. And if we don't have them, and our kids aren't getting that, I can't imagine the strain it's gonna put on the rest of our infrastructure, i.e. police, whatever. So, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying if we're gonna tout ourselves as capital, we, we may wanna change that a little bit and say, there are instances where we support wages and salaries, um, for certain programs to help our youth or, or our elderly, or hospice, or whatever it is. You know, I just, I just wanna be very clear about, I'm trying to find out what the clarity is about how we do that. Because it, it seems all very, kinda all over the place for me, and so, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a grip on the bat and find out exactly where, where we're at. But it sounds like, from what you're telling me, we're wherever we decide we wanna be, correct? As long as we are, uh, upfront and out, out with our public and where that money's going, before the vote.
Yeah.
And we do make their financials, they do send their financials to us, 'cause we do ask them on, on times, don't we, for their financials? And so, we do ask them for that. So, it's not like we're, they come in and they're like, oh, we just want this amount of money. They do give their financials, they show us, hey, this is where we're at, this is what we're trying to do. Um, and so, it's, it's, but we can create it however we want to. You're right. Steve.
Actually, what I was gonna do is, I was gonna ask Mr. Henley if he would paraphrase what it says in statutes in the state constitution about how we spend our tax money, because there are certain things and guidelines in state statute on how and what we can spend tax money.
Yeah, John.
Mayor.
Counsel, thank you. Um, Councilman, um, there's some guideposts that we have. The main one is constitutional, Article sixteen, section six, says basically, you can't give donations to individuals or entities, you can't loan them money, you can't assume their debts, with one exception, for the necessary support of the poor. And that's kind of the constitutional guidepost. Now, we have statutes also, which talks about, you can enter into services for human service, uh, for disabilities, for people who need food, things of that nature. And we've certainly done that, and you've done that. And, uh, in that regard, you can have basically a contractual relationship, and you've seen a lot of those probably come by your, your packet in the last couple of years. In addition, uh, you can take a look at economic development, which is pretty darn hard, uh, within the state of Wyoming, pretty high bars. And really, the, the other one that you've seen a lot of that comes by, and the city wants to advertise, and the statute has words like fairs, expositions, basically city activities. And if they're gonna be bringing some revenue and tourists into town, we can help out with that as well. But those are really statutorily and constitutionally the areas that you're kind of pigeonholed into. Now, if you wanna go ahead and buy your own capital, build your own building, that's something that you can do. But to go build the building for somebody else, it's kind of prohibitive.
Sean.
Well, a lot of what I said has already been said. I was gonna bring up the whole, topic of the budgets that the nonprofits bring in to show us and that kind of thing. But, you know, I also wanna say that a lot of these nonprofits do help with the needy and the poor and the youth, a lot of whom I'm sure had very little to no say in that One Cent survey. Um, so, really, in, in, in Wyoming and in Casper specifically, that it really, the only ones that take care of those groups of people are nonprofits, the government doesn't. Um, and this is the only way that we can really, I think, assist with that. Um, so, I am not for removing funding from nonprofits in the One Cent.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, concur with Councilman Johnson and, uh, most of my colleagues as far as the importance of the nonprofits, the services they're providing. Uh, as you said, the city itself is not providing much in the way of any of these social services or anything like that. Um, I guess it would make me, uh, more comfortable, Anna, do you mind answering a quick question for me? Do you know how many nonprofits are in Natchitochi County?
Um, I actually, I do have that. Can I pull it up for you?
Sure.
Okay, and you can continue.
Sure. So, uh, I believe it's over a hundred.
Yes.
But, uh, so, the city doesn't have the ability to fund them all, and I guess I don't feel like we, as a council, are equipped to be able to measure, just, you know, despite how great we make the survey or the evaluation process, say, we have all of them apply to us, we're not equipped to be able to, um, prioritize necessarily how important each service is, or how far they're gonna stretch our dollar that we were to give them or anything like that. And so, I guess for me, uh, Councilwoman Sutherland spoke to earlier about outcomes, it would make me feel a lot more comfortable if, rather than having nonprofits apply towards us, we were establishing what are the goals that we wanna achieve through this funding, um, perhaps even referencing or citing s, important documents. The Casper and Natchitochi County Health Department did a community health needs assessment back in twenty eighteen that kind of identified our community's kind of weakest points or our, um, uh, highest needs. And so, I would love for us to be able to reference documents like that to establish goals or outcomes that we wanna achieve with this funding, and then we're seeking out the support of the nonprofits that are out there providing those services and would help us achieve those goals. Uh, Child Advocacy Project was an entity that was in the city's proposed One Cent, one of the few nonprofits that remain. And, uh, I didn't have issue with that one, because they provide forensic interviews for children who have been in a, a situation of, uh, you know, potential sexual or physical abuse. Our police department does not have the education, experience, or staff, or, you know, is not equipped to be able to handle those interviews in best practice. And so, that's, uh, why partnership with an entity like that makes sense to me. And so, I think it would, uh, make sense for us as council to establish what are our highest needs, what are the outcomes we wanna achieve with funding that we set aside for these purposes, and who in our community is providing those services and helps supplement or expand what we're doing as a municipality. Did you find it, Anna?
Yep. Um, the total number of nonprofits in Natchitochi County are three hundred and eighty-two. Of those, ninety-three of them employ more than one individual, and, um, the total number of employees is three thousand three hundred and sixteen, and that's of twenty-twenty census.
Thank you.
Bruce, thank you. Kyle, thank you for your eloquency, because you, you said what I was trying to say. You just did a, a much better job of it. What I was trying to get to was, we have so many nonprofits, and some of them are valuable, some of them are not as valuable, and we, as a council, I think, need to designate what, what it is we're looking for. What, what are they doing for our community? What, and almost rank them in, in importance, so that they are getting the money that they need, but we're not just shelling out money to, to ones that aren't really doing what we feel should, they should be doing for our community. I guess, if that makes sense. But Kyle said it much better, so thank you for that. But that's kind of where I was at earlier, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I can just add, uh, sharpen the point a little bit with regard to what, um, our two colleagues are saying here. Uh, one filter council should consider is which nonprofits leverage the city's services compared to those that are not as acutely, uh, capable of that. Uh, you, you brought up a good example, there's been a couple of good examples here. Um, and I would say that, um, that, that would give you, I think, a lot of start in your deliberative process that you're, that you're going through. Because not every nonprofit that we have in the county is going to have as close a relationship with respect to the services we would need to provide if that particular nonprofit were to go away. And that's what I mean, as a suggestion, because I don't have to make that decision.
So, and, and let me, and what I can say in relation to that is that I think that if we move towards funding, um, in the last two cycles that we've done this, uh, it's an application process. I mean, it's, it, what's one of the things that we've had. And so, it's, it's an application, we allocate the funding to say, these are the, this is what it is. And so, we can create the gut, we could say, this is what we're trying to do, you know, as far as trying to help the community to do that, what that looks like. Um, and it's, it, it is, it's, it's an application process. And so, I think one of the conversations that we can have as we move forward, and if this passes, 'cause I'm in support of it, um, definitely, of funding our, our nonprofits for this, um, I've always found it to be important, um, no matter what. And so, the question is that how, what would that look like? And I think once we get past this pro, this process, the question will be is how do we create that pro, that program? Um, this can be the best benefit, not only for the nonprofits, but the benefit to the city of Casper as well. So, Bruce, and then Steve.
Thank you. Uh, and on that same line, when we're trying to figure out where we're gonna pull money from to fund that, it would be much better if we had an idea of how many true partners we, we need or we have, and what their funding desires are, before we just say, we're gonna throw three million in nonprofits, and there may be only twelve that are benefiting or using our services, you know what I mean? And they don't need three million dollars. That would be a really good, um, thing for us to know, so that we know exactly how much money we're, we're kind of looking at to allocate, because we're so spread, so thin as it is.
Uh, Stephen, then Jai.
The other thing I would be interested in as well is what kind of funds are the surrounding communities and county providing to these nonprofits? Because...
With One Cent?
With...
Or just in general?
In general, but primarily from One Cent as well, because we don't need to be funding county-wide programs with no other governmental or entity's support. You know, because Boys and Girls Club, are they just Casper? Is the Youth Crisis Center just Casper? So, we need to be looking at what the rest of the communities around us, because we are in that unique situation, to where we do have burbs, where none of the rest of the cities in Wyoming have surrounding communities like Mills, Evansville, bar none, and then the outlying county around Ev, uh, Evansville, Edgerton Midwest is part of the county. And so, we need to be looking overall, too, at what, what they are helping to provide to support and help support these nonprofits.
I'm gonna actually ask a quick question. Chief, sorry, I thought I saw a string over there, um, at some point. Chief, do you know if outlying counties, um, towns utilize Youth Crisis Center and things like that for our city? Is that hard to gauge at this point?
Mayor.
I'm just putting you on the spot, I apologize.
And I'm gonna wing it, so I'm gonna qualify now.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, yes. But I...
It's without knowing for sure, without asking questions?
Okay.
That was just a clarification for me.
Well, absolutely.
That's a great question that you asked. Yeah. Uh, Carter gets up.
Well, and I, I think I'd like to do that, just turn your comments into a question, if it's okay. Um, Anna, are you aware of any application process that the county entertains or the other communities entertain for nonprofits with the One Cent money?
Since I have been involved, um, with, uh, nonprofits in this area, there was a process with some dollars that came through COVID over the past couple of years. I'm not familiar with anything beyond that. Um, so, I think that that would be a great question to ask. As for other communities, um, I think that, uh, a lot of good funders will understand that Natchitochi County is oftentimes the hub for an organization, so the bulk of their dollars are coming from and they're being asked for in Natchitochi County. Um, as an organization that worked with many of those, uh, previously in my previous role, um, we actually asked and made a requirement for them to seek out funds from all of the communities that they were serving. Uh, I think that your question, um, to each of those other communities and request for them to also be involved in a similar way would only benefit us all.
Can I ask a follow-up?
You bet.
So, is it your anticipation, then, that the partners you have out in the audience and so on are gonna make a similar aggressive push to the county and to the other communities for shares of One Cent dollars?
I cannot speak to that. I, um, I would say, just speaking, um, from my knowledge and understanding, uh, as somebody who represented an organization that was previously funded, um, that the conversation was sparked because the funds were there and potentially not there.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, it, is that a yes or no? I'm not sure what I...
I am not aware of, that wasn't brought up in any of the discussions
Okay.
that we had prior to coming here today.
Okay. Okay, so I've got Bruce and then Jai.
No, sir, I don't, I don't have that.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Okay, Jai.
Um, I'm sorry, a few things going through my head. Um, I was going to ask clarifying question based off of what you... Um I was going to ask a clarifying question based off of what you said, Bruce. Um I guess just in terms of need, I mean, I I am making an assumption that three million dollars is a partial need. Like, there will, there would always be, I mean, we could say it's a five million dollar bucket. Or I I mean, so I feel like, I, to your, to your point or your question that you were saying about like, how do we know what's needed? I mean, it it is a little bit, um I I am a little bit confused on process as well in terms of like, we've, we see the requests from, you know, our city entities. We see what's proposed funded and what's unfunded. Um but am I understanding this correctly that essentially we're, we would say we've got three million dollars and then we, then the process actually comes next? So we actually aren't in the position to be able to understand what the funding request would be ahead of determining the bucket of money, right?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, that's a good point.
All right. I just was, because the process is really important to me, too, and I think
May I answer? The three million came from, that's what was given last, last cycle, yes. So that's where that number came from.
Right, so it's kind of arbitrary.
I'm sure if we wanted to put ten million in there, we'd find places to put it, but that's not realistic.
Okay.
Stephen then Kyle.
Are we just talking about the total community assistance money? The reason I'm asking is, we keep talking about this three million dollar figure. And I'm trying to figure out what all is going into that three million. Because if it's the community assistance budget line, the nonprofits aren't getting three million dollars. We have money in there for subsidized swimming. There is money in there for Life Steps campus. There is money in there for Children's Advocacy Project, for CNFR funding, for senior center facility improvements. And that's what totals three million dollars in community assistance. So that's why I'm trying to figure out where this three million dollar figure has come from.
Oh, no, you can answer that first.
So
I can answer it.
Oh, I know.
No, I don't. I guess my understanding was that that actually would would be a figure that would be in the unfunded column because it was something that, you know, theoretically would have been requested because it was in the past budget, but it's just been omitted from this budget. So it's not on the sheet, but we know it existed. Am I right?
Yep. Good, great, so. Kyle.
Thank you. Uh I guess, uh to Steve's point, I don't know if it got answered for you, but the three million is the last one since cycle seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. In the proposed one cent allocations that we have in front of us or in our notes, it's entirely unfunded. So that three million dollars, if we were to maintain the last one cent cycle contribution, would need to be, would need to come from community assistance or water and street or roads or somewhere else. It's not funded currently. So if we maintain that three million, it has to come from other line items.
Okay, that's what I was thinking and tonight
Yeah, go ahead. And then I got Lisa then Bruce. Go ahead.
No, that's what I was trying to figure out is that basically, and I didn't see that spreadsheet of how much until maybe thirty minutes ago and didn't get a chance to. Uh no, two hours ago. But uh that's what I was trying to figure out is basically we had given them three million dollars, seven fifty a year in one cent sixteen. Thank you.
Uh Lisa then Bruce.
I just have a question for for, if we're just talking about three million, is this the numbers that we've given out since two, since one cent thirteen?
Mr. Mayor, uh Councilwoman, the uh the challenge with respect to honing the number that constitutes a grant program is difficult because there are a number of ways that you have shared money with outside agencies over the years. And that's why that question is very, very difficult. And so we sent you a number of spreadsheets, the likes of which we plan to pull up later tonight when we're sharing data with you during our portion of the opportunity to to talk to you. Uh that that lays out every single community partner uh that we have employed relationships with since one cent thirteen took place, which is sixteen or so years ago. Um some of those you're going to see are not um included in the community assistance portion of your budget that we're proposing. Some of those you're gonna find in parks, for example. Some of those you're gonna find in other areas of your budget. Some of them you actually have in the general fund now. So the the iterations have changed quite a bit and the apples-to-apples comparison becomes really challenging. That's the point I'm trying to make. If you look at the bottom line of that particular spreadsheet, uh you will notice what various iterations have looked like over the years. Um and and what we've done is tried to give you a feel for what the granting portion of your dollars that you've shared with outside partners looks like. And three million is the best we can do to give you a frame of reference from one cent sixteen.
Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh so it sounds like we're gonna have a presentation from city staff after we hear from Anna, Kim, and Angela. And so I guess to be respectful of their time, in case they need to dip out earlier or something, I'd love to wrap up any questions that we have for Anna, move on to the other two presenters, and then we can, like, I got lots of questions, but they're not necessarily the ones that would need uh these folks. So um I'm gonna hang on to those ones at least till afterwards. I guess my last question for Anna is, uh and it's in regards to Councilman Cathy's point earlier about whether the nonprofits applying for one cent through Casper are providing services to folks in the surrounding communities. Um I'd love to get your perspective on that. From the list of folks, I think Self-Help Center is the only one that I believe is outside of our city limits. But my guess is nearly all of those nonprofits are providing services to folks in Barnon Mills, Evansville, potentially Midwest, Edgerton. Could you speak to that, please?
I believe that would be easily confirmed, yes. Uh most of them, if they are not regional or statewide, are specific to Nettona County.
Thank you. Bruce, and then I'm gonna go ahead and get moving forward to get these guys.
And this is why, um and I know it sounds like it's not possible for us to get an exact number, since that three million is unfunded. Um not knowing what we need or how much we need is a real and I I don't want to speak for any of our nonprofit uh partners, but my guess is, one cent money is very important to a lot of them. Whether they need it or not, you always ask for, you know, it's one of those deals. And so it would really, really be nice to know what's actually needed. But there's just not a way for us to do that, is there?
It would be a challenge, I think, for anybody.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Anna.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and move on. Um Kim, do you wanna, you okay to start next?
Good evening. I'm Kim Summerall-Wright. I'm the Executive Director of the Casper Housing Authority. I am not a nonprofit. Um we are actually a public entity created by the city of Casper to handle low-income and affordable housing in the city of Casper. Um we do work in less, but that is under a separate contract. All the things that we do in Casper are specifically to this area. Um we were created by you guys, actually fifty years ago, um under state statute through uh city ordinance to do this for you. Um and through all of that process, be- being a public entity, it's really easy to look in from the nonprofit world, because we have a nonprofit as well, and make assumptions. Whenever you're a public entity, things are a little bit different. For example, um you can't apply for a grant unless you have a 501(c)(3). We don't have that. We're a public entity. So what we've done is, over the last eight years, we have had a contract with the city of Casper to manage the Life Steps campus. Um we've done a lot of work to it. We keep it fully leased. We do all the maintenance. We pay the utilities on it. We water the grass. Um we lease that property to qualified nonprofits that are vetted. Um we don't just lease it to anybody. We need to make sure that whatever program is coming on is um for low-income families to help them reach uh self-sufficiency and to move forward in their lives. So when we took it over, there are actually ten buildings on the Life Steps campus. When we took that over, there had not been a lot of investment by the city of Casper. And you do own the property. You guys actually own that property. You probably did not notice it in your most recent study. It was not included to see what needed to be done up there because we've been working on it. Um during that time, as as during this eight years, we've hit the one cent money twice. Both times we have taken every penny you've given us and reinvested it in the Life Steps campus. So consequently, you may have our name on there, but all we are are stewards of the money that is invested through the capital part of the Life Steps campus. As the campus has been made safe, um we've gotten rid of lead-based paint. We've gotten rid of asbestos. We've replaced carpet that was molded. I mean, we've done a ton of work up there. If you haven't been up there in the last two or three years, you really need to come and see what's been done. But the bottom line is, it's not done. It's not finished. Interestingly enough, whenever you have hundred-year-old buildings and you have something happen, it costs a lot of money. For example, when the boiler blew up and we heard it down on Twelfth Street, it cost a lot of money to replace that. Um anything that's over a thousand dollars, the Housing Authority is not required to fund that. That is where this money comes in. It's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We have leveraged the money into CDBG money. We have used the properties as they have been updated and as they have been modernized. We have brought new programs on the campus. Right now, we have a transitional housing program that helps homeless families with children. It's the only one like it in the city. We take the whole family, not just a single parent, the whole family. Even grandma, if she needs to come. Because what we've discovered is, when you look at that family, you need to work with all of them, not just, not just one parent. Um we take the, that are homeless, actually. And we have a program for homeless teenagers on the program, on the campus. We have a new program that is actually HUD-funded that we were able to bring on the campus because of the modernization we've done, which is for women coming out of an institutional setting. It is one of only three programs in the entire state of Wyoming of that nature. So it's a brand-new, groundbreaking pilot program that we were able to bring in, and it is HUD-funded. So that's new monies coming on to support the campus. We have a Housing First program, and of course, healthcare for the homeless has been on Life Steps campus for a long time. I don't know if you guys saw it in your packet, but the Life Steps campus in the city of Casper just recently were recognized on the National HUD stage for the forward-thinking of the city of Casper in the use of the Life Steps campus to give these children and families the va- the path to a brighter future and self-sufficiency. And that actually went out nationally through um HUD happenings, and it was recognized by the Presidential Appointee and Regentative HUD. And so good things are happening there. It's just really um a lot of work, and we do a lot of work over there. So moving forward, um I don't know, again, if you've been over there lately, but we're gonna have to replace the elevator. I band-aided it until there's no longer replacement parts. We just can't find them anymore. And frankly, it's not fully handicap accessible. I can get a wheelchair in there. I can't drive a wheelchair in there. And that is one of the accesses to healthcare for the homeless. It needs to be replaced. And it's probably gonna cost around a hundred thousand dollars. It's not a little thing. The playground is deteriorating. We're having to look at that. We've got parts of the the south end of Building E has not been finished. We haven't really even gotten into that yet. We've got a lot of things going on in Building F where we have the teen homeless program on the upper floor. The lower floor is not usable right now because it needs to be modernized. It has to be upgraded. Um to give you an idea when I say modernization, when we did the dining hall, you have these beautiful glass balls, right? And I'm, they're probably antiques. I'm pretty sure they had to be. When we took them down, the cords that were hanging down from the ceiling were wrapped in fabric. That's how old they were. These are the things we're talking about when we say modernization. We're talking about bringing it back to life, making it a place for people to live, to find their way back. And we do deal with a lot of domestic violence. We deal with a lot of families that are new to the system. You lose your job, you don't know that there is housing assistance available. And if there is, it may be a two-year wait. I can't, there's not a lot of things I can do with federal programs, but I can help them on the campus. But the reality is, without the money, there's not a whole lot I can do. Um if something breaks, it's just gonna stay broken. I can't fix it, and we'll have to shut it down. Without that money, we cannot make that property safe and affordable. And that is our mission. When I say safe, I mean several things. It can't have asbestos. It can't have lead-based paint. It's gotta be safe. It's gotta be in a good neighborhood. I have to have someone who's watching it. I have to have security up there. It has to be safe. Without this money, I can't make it safe anymore. And without being able to do that, there's no incentive for the Casper Housing Authority to continue maintaining, taking on the campus. It's a lot of work. It's um kind of the definition of the money pit, but any old building is. But we've also discovered through the reclamation of Star Apartments, things can be made whole again. They can be put in place. It just takes the right people and it takes the right amount of funding. And this ask is not for Casper Housing Authority. It doesn't go into my general fund. It doesn't fund any of my capital projects at all. It solely goes to the Life Steps campus. So literally, you're taking the one cent money and reinvesting in your own property. And that's what we're asking you to do.
Miss Kim, questions for Kim? Kyle.
Uh I don't know if I have a question right now. Maybe I'll come to one. Uh but I did just want, as liaison uh for City Council to the Casper Housing Authority Board, I just wanted to uh recognize um a few different things. One, just how much federal funding you've successfully brought into this community to build um projects like Center Point, uh Raven Crest, working on Liberty Square right now. So um absolutely leveraging, um bringing money from the outside community. Um uh while serving on that board, I also um uh can guarantee that you cross your Ts, you dot your Is, the accountability that you have of your staff, of your organization. You track every single dollar, every single cent that's spent. You follow every regulation to a T. Um that's what I love to see, and my guess is lots of nonprofits in the community. Um that I think you're setting the standard, and I'd love to see uh other folks get to that place uh because I think it's really important uh when you're managing those funds um to do so in a responsible, transparent way. And um so I I thank you for that. Um, no question. That's all I had to say at the moment. Uh but yeah, uh I just uh appreciate kind of the transparency and uh just the way you guys do business. Also, uh I've worked in social services as a job coach, as a case manager, and I've worked with several of the people on your team. And I know that there are people, um in social services, uh there's different groups of people. And um I guess the philosophy I adhere to is providing assistance to folks that are in need, that are, uh have gone through a crisis potentially or struggling with mental illness or something, but helping them achieve self-sufficiency, helping them work towards um being independent and uh uh, you know, providing for themselves and contributing back to society. That, to me, is what successful social services should be doing, is helping people get back to that point of self-sufficiency um rather than um potentially enabling or um fostering dependency with the system. I've seen this um, this uh, you know, a lot of folks stay in the system for a very long time because they don't believe they're giving the skills to be able to live out on their own and provide for themselves. And so I just really appreciate the work your team does and the philosophy that your staff adheres to. You guys work a really lean program and you stretch your dollar extremely far. I know you're very thrifty and you're always finding like budgety, and I, that jives with me a lot because I'm always trying to repurpose things and save money and uh be thrifty. So I just appreciate the way you guys do business. You operate really lean, uh but also run a really tight ship.
Steve.
I don't know whether you have the number or not, but do you have roughly an idea of how many, say, people come to your program as homeless and wind up then with their own houses and out on their own? And roughly how long, on an average, uh does something like that take?
Well, I can tell you that in the last six years, fifty-six families have purchased their first home, not just renting, they they purchased their first home. So um and we're very proud of that because that doesn't happen a whole lot in our business. And so we've actually received some recognition from HUD. And and what we're talking about is going from coming into the system to becoming a homeowner who's now paying taxes and whose family will likely never be on the system again. Um we, right now, have a little over a thousand families housed. Um there are fifty-eight units on the Life Steps campus. There were only twenty-four when we started, so we've created that many housing units there. It generally will take about a year to move off of the campus, sometimes a little less, sometimes a little bit more. Um and a lot of times it has to do with with um the situation. For example, a domestic climate situation can take a little longer, right? Um someone who is just recently lost their job and lost everything, they're new to the system, they may be back on their feet in three to six months. And so we have actually quite a bit of turnover. Um our federal programs, again, we have a thousand housed. I have eighteen hundred families on the waitlist waiting for assistance. We do have what we call a local preference. Um we do not serve anybody outside the city of Casper until we serve everybody in Casper who needs housing, so.
Well, and it sounds like too, and I was glad to hear you say that, you're interested, as Kyle was talking about, you're interested in teaching them how to fish rather than providing fish. And that's, that's a wonderful deal, so. rather than providing fish, and that's, that's a wonderful deal. So, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Kim. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I did see the agenda. I know what my timeframe is, and I'll try to dress me concise. Thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to come before you and speak to you about the 40-plus years that the Flat River Trails has been partnering with the city of Casper. We were actually, like Kim said, formed by you. We were a subcommittee of the city, and then when the city realized they couldn't do some of the functions of gaining easements from private individuals, they suggested that a nonprofit be formed to assist with some of that work. I am joined this evening in the other room by several of my board members who give time, expertise, and their personal money to the work that we do. I'm sorry they can't be in here with us, but they're out there in spirit with me. So, we also want to thank you all for the hard work that you're doing. I mean, I can tell that it, it must be mind-numbing in some ways to allocate all these funds. And we also appreciate your focus on our transportation system, our streets and roads and the maintenance of those. And we're here tonight, or I'm here tonight, to speak to you about another element of our transportation system, which is non-motorized transportation. So, non-motorized transportation or trails is recognized by YDOT as such, as well as the Federal Highway Administration, who send dollars down to communities to fund the construction of trails. I'm here tonight to speak to you about that portion of our transportation system. Trails are important to the citizens of Casper. We've talked about the survey tonight, or you have talked about the survey tonight. Trails rank sixth, right below essential city services like streets and utilities. Non-motorized trails serve people of all ages, abilities, and income levels. So, kids who can't drive, adults who don't have cars, seniors who don't choose to drive anymore. Trails contribute to our community's health and well-being. We saw that hugely during COVID. Our use of trails went up 300% in some cases. Trails also assist with our quality of life and our ability to attract new businesses and keep our workers here. So a little bit going back about our history, I mentioned we were formed by you. We've been working with you for 40 years. We're your partner. And during that 40 years, we've been able to construct 20-plus miles of non-motorized trails using $11.8 million total. 68% of that $11.8 million came from outside of the city. That means 32% only of that $11.8 million came from One Cent funds. So your 32% allowed us to leverage 68% more to construct what we have in this community. By comparison, just to let you know, the city of Cheyenne, our nearest city in population, certainly maybe our competitor, they have 44-plus miles of non-motorized trails. And in 2021, their voters approved $3.5 million in trail extension dollars and $2.5 million for maintenance. Just a little bit of history, I know you're looking back at what happened last time in Number 16. We were allocated during that cycle at $1.5 million, $500,000 for major trail maintenance, $800,000 for construction, and $200,000 for our operations. And I'd like to dig a little deeper, but quickly, into those buckets of money. So the maintenance funds, first time we had ever been allocated maintenance funds before from One Cent. We have the history, as I said, we go back to Number 7. We were grateful for it because a lot of our products were built in the 1980s, and they were 30 years old, and they needed attention. People were calling us, calling parks, calling our office. They were unsafe. We're very pleased to report that three years into this cycle, we've done quite a lot of work along the River Trail, and we're, have another project teed up. We should have expended all of those funds by the end of this One Cent cycle. We're also currently working, the city staff, on a trail assessment survey that will give us real data as we move forward through the next years about what needs to be taken care of, whether it's the sage drainage pathway, the long drainage, the Casper rail trail, whatever that may be. I'd like to tell you, though, that although we had never received maintenance money before, Flat River Trails has been engaged with trail maintenance since 2002, when we formed our own endowment, maintenance endowment through the Wyoming Community Foundation. We receive an annual distribution from that endowment that we use to employ a trail technician who's out on the trail several times a week all through the year. We use the money for other small trail maintenance items as well. And in 2021, through funding that we had saved through this distribution, we spent $68,000 and replaced a segment of trail all on our own that was near the pump house. Maintenance is definitely a priority for us, and we hope to be able to continue to do that in perpetuity. Our Number 16 trail construction funds were allocated specifically to the vital extension of the River Trail to West Casper, an area that is very poorly served by non-motorized trails. We have been working on trails along Robertson Road for several years, but that area of Casper was landlocked and no way to reach the River Trail except by traveling along CY Avenue, which, I don't know about you, but I wouldn't want my child on CY, and I, I don't care to travel on it. This project was $1.25 million estimated on. We used One Cent funds to leverage, leveraged One Cent funds to bring in $500,000 in TAP money, $75,000 in NCSD rec funds, and over $100,000 in privately raised funds. So right now, where we sit, over 50% of this project has been funded for, from other than One Cent funds. We did receive operation funds from the last, during the last cycle, and we have received operation funds since the inception of One Cent for us, which I think was Number 7. Even though these funds represent only about 20% of our operating budget, it's absolutely crucial for us. We've heard from other nonprofits, Anna spoke too, how challenging it can be to raise those operation dollars. And what we do with those operation dollars is work directly for you and with city staff to write grants, to work on easement acquisition, planning and project oversight, as well as maintenance oversight. As we look to the future, and as you look to the future, I understand, and we all understand at Flat River Trails, how challenging your, your job is. But we respectfully request that you keep our funding from Number 16 intact and allow us to seek other money and bring money into our community. Just as an anecdotal or a little story, you may remember that you funded recently through the city a TAP project that was $1.25 million. One, one million of that came from TAP. You provided $250,000. That's a very powerful, very powerful leverage, in my opinion. We are going to be working in the next cycle on three primary projects. They are connection trails into neighborhoods, schools on both the east and the west side, and we would like to continue to extend the rail trail to Edna's Kimball Wilkins State Park. If we do not receive funding, we cannot access these funds that are out there through TAP and through the Federal Highway Administration, but other Wyoming communities will. If we turn down TAP funds, Cheyenne will take them, Pine Dale will take them, Jackson will take them. And not only will we not be able to enhance and connect our neighborhoods and schools, we also won't be able to bring that money in to stimulate our own economy. So I know your job is hard. We just hope that you will find a way to continue this 40-plus-year partnership. That's all I have, but I would love to answer questions.
Thank you. Kyle Alden, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Angela, for all the information. I'll, I'll say first off, I have a question, but first off, I appreciate how easy it is to understand when you talk about, or when Anna spoke earlier about leveraging city funding to bring in outside funding from the community. It's really easy in respect to your organization to see that illustrated, to see this two-to-one match, or sometimes up to like four-to-one match. That is helpful, at least for me on the council, to know, oh, if the city's contributing quarter million dollars towards this, you're funding it, you know, you're getting a four-to-one match. That is an easy illustration to me, how far you're extending that dollar. For every dollar that we give you for that project, you're pulling it forward from the outside. I think that makes a strong case, and I think that helps illustrate, when you talk about leveraging city funding, that illustrates it perfectly. And so, thank you for that. Your organization specifically stands out to me as far as, you know, really being able to visualize that. Secondly, you said you have an endowment for maintenance of the trails. My question is, what would you say on average it costs annually to maintain our current trail system? And is it covered through the endowment currently? Thank you.
Well, we pay for our maintenance technician completely with our distribution. When the market was really good, our fund was a little over a million dollars. We've grown it from $200,000 in 2002 to today. So we've been aggressively, or tried to be as aggressive as we could with, with growing the fund. So we, we pay for her salary entirely, we pay for other maintenance items. And as I mentioned to you, we were able to dedicate that $68,000 for the new trail. On average, our distribution is about $36,000 per year right now, given what our fund, where our fund sits.
Follow-up, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And what would you say average maintenance costs are to maintain our current trail system? Is that covering it, or are you, like us in some respects, falling behind in maintenance?
Well, we share the responsibility of maintenance of the trails with the city of Casper, with you. So Parks Department handles most of the big items, which I would enumerate to you, would be mowing along the trails, mowing in some of the parks that are adjacent to the trail. So I don't know, Zulima and I, two million, oh, Zulima.
Tree trimming.
Tree trimming, tree trimming, yes, tree trimming. So I'm sorry, Kyle, I don't have a, an absolute figure for, for you on that. Zulima and I could work on it. Of course, I would say that the $36,000 that we're generating from our maintenance endowment is certainly not going to cover it all. But we felt like it was our fiduciary duty as a nonprofit and as your trail-building arm to at least make our best effort to create something that would take care of the trail in perpetuity.
Steve? Are, are any of the other governmental agencies giving you money?
Well, they're not giving us any money. They're giving the city of Casper money. So the YDOT TAP funds come directly to the city on a reimbursable, in a reimbursable way. So no, we do not receive funding for ourselves.
So there's no maintenance money, no capital money coming from Evansville?
No.
Or the county, or?
No, sir. But it's a great question, because back in the day, like I would say, maybe One Cent Number 12, maybe in 13, the county did have the process open whereby we went and requested funds from them if we felt like we wanted to extend a trail into the county. That went away, and I can't remember exactly which cycle it was, Mr. Kathy, Councilman Kathy.
Any other questions for Angela? Thank you, Angela. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Can I ask Carter?
Yeah, you bet, Bruce.
Carter, do we, at the current initial model that we got, was there money in there for the trust? And what, what amount was that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the, the funding that was set aside for the Trails Trust was a million, which would have been a $500,000 reduction from last time.
So $250 per year?
Basically.
So now that we've had those presentations, I know Carter has, he and staff have some presentation and I think recommendation.
Ten minutes.
What's that?
Ten minutes.
Carter has two. Can you condense it in two? Just kidding.
Take your time. Oh, heck, good. Whatever you'd like me to do. Thank you. So while we're setting up some of the exhibits that we want to go through with you tonight, can I, Liz, ask you to talk about the rebate research that you did for fleet at Transit?
Yes, sir. Your honor, members of council, myself as well as Ms. Belzer with the Fleet Department did reach out, and we referred to it, comes a rebate to look into that program to see if what we were paying for fuel for our federal fleet could be reimbursed back to us, and that was a no.
No fuel surcharges.
Any other questions for Liz?
So, Mr. Mayor, one of the other iterations of that question was whether or not council wanted some means of covering some of our inflationary pressures through tickets and so forth. You and I talked about that, Liz, and I, and I probably didn't do a good job last time we discussed that. Can you give us some of the nuance you're concerned about as it relates to, you know, increasing tickets to cover some of our inflationary issues that we're facing on Transit, on Transit side?
Council, yes, I was kind of, I, I understood the question last time when I kind of teased Councilman Kathy's result. With our demand that we have seen consistently going up, given the economic times, we were not recommending taking up ticket prices with this fiscal year budget. It's, we see it daily. We see the number of rides that are being added, usually about four to five a week on our assist services. And then again, our fixed route, looking at the number of individuals who are on the fixed route, the six routes around Casper on a daily basis, again, Monday through Saturday. It's, we're, we're doing a presentation again tomorrow for another community group just on the demand that we're seeing. And again, our hope has been to extend our route. We've made a few adjustments, but we wanted to extend it out even to the VA clinic, which is something this body has talked about over the past year also. And those are some of our needs and the demands that we're seeing. So ticket increases were not part of, ticket prices increases not part of this year's budget.
Go ahead, Steve.
By not, you're seeing more riders. Now, are those token riders, or are those paying customers?
Both, yeah, Council, yes, both. So, and again, most of us would hop on and give our dollar, and we are seeing more of the giving of the dollar. Our Fairbox revenues have surpassed our estimated budget from last year significantly, and I, we anticipate that again this year. So there are paying customers.
That answers what I was really looking for, so.
But it is, again, far easier to pay two bucks to get to and from employment than to potentially operate a vehicle on the fixed route.
Anything else from Liz? Oh, yeah, Bruce.
I'm just, I'm sure our constituents are happy that they're on open credit. So it's always nice when we can say we can still provide your service and not if you charge you more. So I'm assuming they were in your mind when you chose not to do that.
They were in my mind, but I'm also hopeful that they were, that you all will support that. And they will know that you're in your mind.
Good deal.
Please.
All right. Thanks, Liz.
Just straight cuts right there.
Steve? It's not a question for the discussion tonight with the One Cent funding, but I would like something brought up, and we could put it on future agenda if it's okay with the mayor, that we need to look at moving bus stops off of our main transportation routes. And by that, well, the other day I saw, and I don't remember which route it was, that the bus came off of Thelma Drive, made a right turn heading east on Second Street, and immediately stopped. And I'm going, why can't we move that back around off of Second Street onto Thelma Drive and do some other things like that to free up our big transportation quarters? But that's, like I said, I would like to see that added.
Okay. Kyle, and then Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilman Kathy's point, I know that the Tron County Library is one of the agencies seeking One Cent funding, and one of their concerns, so they were, had requested One Cent funding for not only books and materials, but also to increase security due to issues they've had with the transfer station being so close in proximity. And my guess is, I'm pleased upon it.
And my guess is, I'm pleased upon, we would probably agree with, um, there being a disproportionate amount of, uh, you know, activity. I imagine they spend, uh, a bit of their time over there. And so I would be curious what, what the rationale is for having the transfer station there currently, and if there's potential to move it. I would hope that maybe that would ease some of the concerns that library has in regards to security.
Mr. Mayor, just to address kind of the vein of conversation that we're, uh, considering here, um, the city does not have the luxury, if you will, of making these decisions independent of the FTA. Even in little old Casper, Wyoming, that is way far away from Washington, we, we do not have the opportunity to consider these kinds of things in a void. And so generally, what that means is we have to go through analysis that the feds oversee and, and so on, that, uh, that requires a bunch of public input and so forth, which is not, I'm not saying inappropriate by any means, but it definitely engenders a larger process that council's got to be aware would come along with these kinds of conversations. And so accordingly, the locations of the stops that you see were all put there in conjunction with the FDA's direction to do so. So, uh, please be mindful of that. We can talk about it a lot, honestly. Uh, but, but we, we can't do that in a void.
So let's, I'll make the recommendation of council located, that maybe we should hold off on that then. Are you saying, or do you want, is the conversation moot? I mean, because it sounds like we'd have to go down a pretty deep hole dealing with FTA and all that stuff.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not saying that the point is moot. No, I'm, I'm certainly not saying that. But I am saying it's definitely a larger conversation without a question.
Okay. Bruce.
The easier fix is to provide funding to the library so that they can have their security guard and get their books. But, which led us to the question of, I'm assuming the library, because there's not a line item for them, was included in that three million also that, from the years before. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman, they have received capital funds and operational funds in cycles previously.
And it was in that, that particular line item, the three million, is what I'm asking, right? That's where it was?
I, I would say so.
Okay. So, I mean, I, myself personally, and probably everybody else here, of all the hundreds of emails I've answered and been through, the library's at the top of the list. So, I mean, somehow I, and I'm gonna let you get to your presentation, but I think we're gonna have to find some funding somewhere. We're gonna have to move some money somewhere in order to take care of our nonprofits and our library.
What's that?
In one cent sixteen, the library got three hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty.
Right, we saw that, but, but, um, in the new allocation that we had received, if I may.
You bet.
Um, there wasn't a line item for them, so I was assuming they were lumped in on that three million dollar, uh, unfunded.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, um, they, they have been a part of that granting process of, of past.
That's what I was asking.
Without a doubt.
Okay, thank you.
So let's go ahead and let Carter go ahead and give his recommendations and, uh, presentation to council. But is that fair, Carter?
Mr. Mayor, we've got just a few more data points we need to share with you in response to questions you had last time, and then hopefully that would culminate into a recommendation for you to consider.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
The chart that you have here is a, uh, uh, an instrument that Pete created, and Zulima, of course, helped with as well, to answer questions that you had with respect to what happens to swimming rates if one cent goes away for the, the aquatics function, if you will. Um, as you might imagine, that's a little harder to demonstrate from an analysis standpoint than it is to just say, you know, three bucks or whatever. Um, and so that's why this is, uh, you know, with all the tabs on the bottom, a little bit scary as it relates to the number of spreadsheets that we, uh, have deployed here. But I want to tell you too, though, this really is just a blush with respect to the larger conversation we want to have with you about the recreation enterprises that you all oversee. I would like to come back to you with each recreational enterprise as a feature so that you can see a very similar analysis with respect to the true cost of doing business, the true revenue, uh, needed to offset that expense so that indeed, i- if possible, the general fund could be kept whole. So be aware, we'd like to come back to you to talk not only aquatics in the future, but also Hoganon, also the Reg Center, also, you know, Fort Casper, and so on and so on. The challenge that you have with respect to this particular demonstration is you have to assume in order for you to see a numerical representation that consumption, consumption destruction is not a thing. Okay? And I would tell you with pool access, consumption destruction is very much a thing. And, uh, probably, and, and you'll see what I'm talking about here in just a minute. The scenario that we modeled for you is the loss of one cent from aquatics totally, half of one cent from, uh, being withheld from aquatics. And, uh, what happens when you look at pool closures as an offset to the general fund? Uh, impact, if you will. This also operates under the assumption that you want to keep the general fund whole. I'm not necessarily sure that's the case. So with that, if I could turn some time over to Pete to walk through those models simply for modeling discussion purposes and to answer your question from last time, that'd really be helpful.
Pete.
Thank you very much, Council. I, I know that our time is limited, so I will try to go rather briefly and eliminate too many nuances. Can I borrow the mouse? Okay, so yes, this is a, a model that Zulima and I created over the weekend. Um, very, very, I'm gonna try to go fast, don't apologize. Um, basically, this is right, what you see right in front of you is a picture of the budget that we did last. This is, this is the, uh, the, uh, total cost of the aquatics fund. This is the total amount of this, did the aquatics fund in terms of, uh, both for one cent money and for, uh, general fund money, basically to subsidize that fund, keep it whole. It also has a certain amount of revenue from its, from its passes and concessions and classes and all the other things it can do. And, and under that situation, it's, uh, oops, sorry, this is the zero. Here we go, seven two cents. There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. That was a little confusing. So yeah, so here's our three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, one cent fund, uh, one cent subsidy this year. We're moving in two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from, from the general fund for perpetual care. And towards to our five hundred eighty thousand dollars here, of money moving into the fund. And, and basically, you can see how each pool, every one of our pools loses money. That's where the subsidy is going. It can keep some pool holes that we can continue to have our, our aquatics upwards. We also have a sense for how many customers, open swim customers come to each pool. It's a little bit hard to know in some cases because, especially for Marion Cryer, where we don't charge a fee, it's, it's a little hard to have a head count, but we do what we can. Uh, certainly, some of our pools are more popular than others. Uh, Mike Cedar Pool stands out, it's a very popular, especially in the summertime. And Aquatics Sound, of course, has the advantage of being open for twelve months, I suppose, just to. But, but again, this is just a picture of how things are right now. And then a sense for also what the charge is here to get into each one of these pools as a general admission customer. So again, this is for, for reference. This is where we're at now. So we start playing with the numbers. Um, let's start with a half one cent, because it's a relatively, it's a smaller change. Um, so up here, what we've got going, you see, the one cent subsidy drops to, instead of the one point three million that was originally conceived, cut it in half, which would come up to one sixty-two five per year, total of six hundred and fifty. If you do that, then presumably, if you're going to keep the general fund basically the same, in this case, two hundred twenty-one thousand per year, then you have to raise rates. And so we're suggesting that if you're gonna raise rates without any other changes, and increase it by about four dollars a person at every one of the pools. So, so down here, you start to see, all right, Marion Cryer, which had no charge at all, becomes four dollars a person. Mike Cedar jumps to nine, Marion's value jumps to eighty-fifty, and so on. So it's a significant price increase. Um, and I do want to reiterate what Carter was saying before about the consumption destruction. This model assumes that no fewer people will go to the pool even though the price rises. And of course, we know that that's not the case. Certainly, anytime you raise the price of anything, consumption drops. We don't know how much. So this model is a little bit simplistic in that point of view, but at least, but this shows at least generally speaking, if, if the number of visits was static, if it didn't affect it at all by the price, then this is what you would get, a four dollar per person increase in order to, for the general fund to be roughly unaffected. Now, of course, we could go further and say, all right, if there was no one cent, what happens if that happened? Well, it gets rather extreme. We think the price increase is going to be seven twenty-five per, per admission. And so you start to get, you know, some rather significant increases here. We have Mike Cedar Park, two twelve twenty-five. Um, we have Marion's Bag, eleven seventy-five, and so on. Um, again, it's, this is mostly because of the pool attendance. Obviously, if the pool attendance could be, could rise, then, then we could do it with less. Uh, but, but it's never gonna rise with, or say, we shouldn't expect it to rise because we're raising fees. We should expect that.
Pete, I've got a question from Bruce.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this model, and anticipation for this tonight, I went to every pool, and I spent time at each one. And I found it unbelievable. And Zulima, I'm sorry I'm coming after you, but you're new in this post. So Mike Cedar Park, which is our most popular outdoor pool, is open four hours a day. Four hours. So if you want to change that model, get the pool back open like it used to be at nine o'clock in the morning until nine o'clock at night, and watch those numbers go through the roof. There are other ways to do this than taking away subsidies or raising rates, open the pool and allow people to utilize it in the summertime during the hours that a pool should be open. Four hours a day, I was flabbergasted. It's unbelievable to me. Such an attraction, four hours a day. No way. Impossible. And I, I, I didn't have a chance to call Zulima. I was just taken aback. I'm like, that's, my wife used to go to that pool at nine o'clock in the morning when she was a kid, four hours a day. And I asked the people that worked there, I said, why? Are you, are, are there staffing issues? No, we're just, we give lessons. Well, there's other pools to give lessons than the most popular outdoor pool in town. I, I was just shocked. And it's no wonder we're subsidizing this thing to the tune that we are. Four hours out of a, what, fourteen hour daylight day, that that thing could be open and be utilized and visited and money being spent? It doesn't make sense to me. So that's my question. Why?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, one thing you should note about the attendance figures is that that assumes, um, the, the historic figures that we've seen at all the pools when those hours were employed. And so, for example, the fourteen thousand, I think it is, that you see is?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand, okay. Um, that is historic data. And so that, that's the peak, if you will, of attendance at Mike Cedar.
I thought he said that was current data. When he presented this to us, he said that was current data.
Sure. You want to address that, Pete?
Yeah, yeah, we do have, we do have past attendance figures here to get a sense for, for how, I mean, certainly, it's always a trick to project how far it's gonna go. Mike Cedar Pool, for example, it, it's around twenty thousand, maybe fourteen thousand, nineteen thousand. So, so this is an estimate for next year. So we think it's gonna be around seventeen. Obviously, who knows, but, but that's our, that's our guess for the upcoming season.
When did those hours change? How long has it only been a four-hour pool? How many years has it been like that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, uh, the other assumption that we need to consider with respect to how much time we keep it open for open swim, and this is a this season dynamic, is that indeed, open swim is more profitable than swimming lessons. And so our perspective is, open swimming is absolutely not more profitable than swimming lessons. And so in keeping with the spirit of where we thought you wanted us to go and make decisions for these kinds of enterprises on a business basis, that's very clearly the direction we gotta go. But also very clearly, if you don't want that to be the motivating factor with regard to decisions that staff makes sometimes independently of the council, then you tell us, open it back up for open swimming, those subsidies will get worse. And that, that's my point.
As a follow-up, please don't think that I'm questioning staff for why. All I'm saying is, it's our greatest summertime amenity for children, and it's open four hours a day. That just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like we're taking care of our constituents the way we should be with that particular pool. And that's the observation I got.
And, and the observation I'm trying to present to you for consideration is that if you want the subsidy to improve, longer unending hours for open swim is not your answer. Uh, that's what we're trying to tell you.
Okay.
Furthermore, if you want us to change that, all you gotta do is tell us, keep it back open for twelve hours a day, and those subsidies are gonna get worse.
My thought was, the more longer it's open, the more people are coming, the more admissions are being paid. That's what my business head tells me. Apparently, that's not right.
We, we can have this conversation as long as you want tonight, but my, my point is, the business proposal for classes is way more profitable than the business proposal for open swim, where attendance throughout those hours varies so widely that sometimes at nine in the morning, for example, you might have one or two people. Or at nine at night, between eight and nine, you have one or two people. When you concentrate your access where people are most likely to show, i.e., one to, to whatever it is, five, that's when the highest demand takes place and where the most money is gathered.
I understand.
And so that, that's, that's where we're at. But, but if indeed, council's not happy with that, all you gotta do is say, we're done.
It's not that I'm, I'm not happy. I just hope you don't mind me asking the question, because in anticipation of this, I went to the pools, I did the research, and it wasn't adding up. So that's why the question.
Sure. No problem.
And we can share this information independently, so we don't take up too much time in the meeting, but, uh, we do have data indicating what our twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, we skipped twenty twenty because we closed during COVID, and so that's kind of an anomaly. But, so we do have data that indicates how many visits we received during certain hours, and that ten AM to one PM timeframe was a very low visitation. Also, considering what Carter was saying, remember that people bypasses, and then they can visit the pools as many times as they want. So to his point, we get a point of sale once, and then there could be a hundred people at the pool, and that's not generating any more revenue for us except for what we may get in concession sales.
I understand, I understand.
Kyle.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Carter and Zulima, for the information. I've fielded lots of questions from folks about the pool hours, and it's also on the Casper Aquatics Division website, the, the pool hours as well. Um, uh, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is, was there any sort of model that took into account? My guess is it's fairly insignificant. If you were to start charging at Marion Cryer, it probably has minimal impact on any of the end numbers.
Oh, no, it does. Um, especially if you see people will come, and that they will continue to come at the same rate that they are.
Which if you're going from free to a couple bucks is probably a very optimistic.
Of, of course. And, and, and I think that's absolutely the case, that, that as soon as you start charging at a pool, it's gonna be free. You have to assume that attendance will go down. Um, and, and I do apologize, this model is necessarily simplistic on that aspect. Uh, we just had no idea of, of how to judge as you raise the, the price, how, how much does that go to impact attendance? And so we chose to not take that into account at all. But, uh, but absolutely, but, but I, but I do want to make that very explicit, that, that as you raise rates, we have to assume that, that attendance will go down.
Sure.
Good, Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Follow-up, uh, my understanding is that the swimming pool subsidy is a fairly recent feature of the one cent, past couple cycles, maybe. No, not necessarily. Carter, you might explain how long the subsidy.
We, we looked into that, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, to be sure that we were giving you straight information and good information. As far back as we researched, and we didn't go all the way back to the eighties like we did on some of these other questions, uh, but as, as early as one cent thirteen, which again, would have been sixteen to twenty. would have been sixteen to twenty years ago, a subsidy for swimming has been provided through one cent. Now, I will tell you that certainly it's graduated over time. The first cycle was two fifty, I think we ascertained. The second cycle, again, that we researched, we didn't go back past one cent thirteen, was two eighty, and then we got to three hundred, and then three twenty-five, and, and, which is, you know, essentially where we're at today. And, and so that is, in my estimation, a longstanding feature of one cent.
Thank you.
So Carter, do you think it's okay to move on from this?
I think we can, yep. If we could pull up the, anything that you have on utilities?
Thanks, Pete.
Let's go ahead and talk about that. Well, again, this was really just a, just to try to answer the basic question of what ostensibly would happen to rates if one cent goes away. I tried to warn you that at the very beginning, we've got a larger conversation we need to have here, but tonight's purpose was only to answer that question, okay? The second phase of this conversation is what happens to utilities if one cent goes away? Because that was another one of your questions. We could talk about the pro formas for a very extended period of time, and I would hope we could do that another time, to answer the very basic question.
Don't ask questions.
Well, no, I, you know, a lot of, a lot of directions this could go. I totally get it. I get it.
My, my suggestion, too, is we're kind of going deep into this, you guys, is that we try to steer away from rabbit holes and try to stay focused in into the conversation of what we're trying to do with it, the overall picture. Is that fair to, is that fair?
We are here to help council. That's for darn sure. Whatever we can do. So to, to answer the very basic question of what happens to rates if one cent goes away, Peter and Drew, could y'all walk us through what this data represents?
Mayor, Council? You have seen this, but for a few months. This is what we, this is a current one cent sixteen allocation to water, throughout a half million a year. So we've already seen, you know, proposed seven percent, nine percent, nine percent rate increases over the next several years. So your average bill in fiscal year of twenty-six would be sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Can you scroll down a little bit? With the funding that's currently proposed for water, we, we expect that to go down to two point one seven five. So we now anticipate rate increases of ten, ten, and ten, and the water bill from sixty-five to sixty-eight dollars in, in twenty-six. If you want to completely defund water without any one cent allocation, we're then looking at, and keep in mind, I'm anticipating the capital agenda does not change. We don't change the capital through use or capital expenditures, because we, we definitely have needs in our water system that we have to continue to maintain. We're then looking at rate increases of twenty, twenty, and five. You can play with these numbers, and we can certainly do so during the pro forma discussion, but the rate, we're then looking at an average bill in twenty-six of seventy-eight dollars a month. That's on the water side. Very similar situation on the sewer side. Right now, we get five hundred thousand. We already proposed eleven, eleven, eleven. So in twenty-six, your average sewer bill will be forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Let's scroll down just a little bit. That funding is proposed to get reduced to four twenty-fives. So now thirteen, thirteen, and thirteen, so we're forty-one ninety-five to forty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. If you want to completely not allocate any one cent funding to sewer, we then need rate increases of approximately sixteen, sixteen, and sixteen. So from forty, forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents to essentially forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, if you want to completely not allocate any one cent money to either water or sewer. A very, very brief look at what Bridge would do if we didn't change our capital.
Questions on that, on sewer? I'll start with Lisa and then Kyle.
I just have a comment, just for the general public. So that basically means wintertime, your basic bill's going to be about a hundred and fifteen dollars.
Keep in mind that the sewer bill is relatively static, but your, your, your water bill will definitely go up.
Right. But that's, that's like your basic wintertime rates, not summertime.
Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Andrew, for the information. You kept reiterating if capital, the, the rate of capital replacement remains static. Could you please remind us for water and sewer? I thought I recalled it being every couple hundred years for water, every three hundred years for sewer. Could you please confirm that, please?
Mayor, Councilman, that was probably accurate three or four years ago. We're probably now on the, again, you know, maybe two hundred and fifty years for water, maybe three hundred and seventy years for sewer, just because of the rapid rate of inflation that we've been seeing, and, and the fact that the dollar just doesn't go as far as it, as it wants to.
Follow-up. That being said, I would absolutely not advocate reducing capital in order to make these things all balance out.
Bruce.
Isn't it true, Carter, right now with the subsidies, that we had, we probably pay less for water and sewer as citizens of Casper than just about any other municipality in the entire state because of one cent funding?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I would absolutely tell you that that has been an advantage that our rates have had in comparison to some of our competitor cities, or utilities, to be fair, to be fair. One cent has helped keep rates low. Yep, true.
Joy.
How, how long has that subsidy been in place since the beginning of one cent?
Councilman, Councilman, that is not the case. I, I don't think that, that rates have been maintained at, at these lower rates because of one cent, since the history of one cent.
Okay.
But I would like to find out more succinctly what that is, unless you two happen to know.
I know thirteen had it. One cent thirteen did have it. It started.
Okay.
It was at least that far back.
At least that far back.
We didn't go back farther, but at least that far back.
If that helps.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question that I thought we received as homework is to discuss a little bit with regard to the overages that each one cent cycle has produced. And again, we kind of went back as far back as one cent thirteen to give you that feel, because frankly, that was sort of the boom time, if you will, for one cent dollars, and it really carried a lot of our, of our infrastructure weight, if you will, since then. Pete, can you walk us through this analysis, please?
Sure thing. This one, this one blessedly is much simpler. So this, so this is the most recent one since, as far as what was budgeted originally, as far as what we thought we were going to collect at the beginning of that cycle. And as you can see, you know, there was some fluctuation in there. These are the actual amounts collected by fiscal year. So if you scroll down to the bottom, you can start to see overages. Long story short, one cent thirteen and fourteen made a lot of surplus. We estimated much, much less than we actually got. One cent fifteen, not so much. One cent fifteen, the cycle previous to the cycle, we estimated sixty-eight million. We did not collect that. We first brought fifty-four, fifteen million. So, so actually there was a shortfall. And so we actually had to reduce projects about halfway through that one cent cycle because we couldn't afford everything we had originally planned for. And now for, for one cent sixteen, we, we're estimating that we're running around sixty-three million dollars. Of course, we still have another ten months to go, so we don't really know for sure, but, and that, that means that we should, if that happens, have a surplus of about five million over fifty-eight million than we originally hoped for.
Yeah. Bruce. Carter, why, why would we have to stop a project when we're nine million in the ditch, but we were carrying forty over? Or is that, I mean, does that get carried over and then figured into the capital?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, there's two things I want to say about that, and, and I appreciate the question, because I, I think that it bears a lot of relevance in tonight's discussion. First of all, the city manager at the time was concerned that the means to support the projects that were being proposed on a current-for-current basis was at risk. And so his proposal back then was, if we're going to keep within our means, we need to reduce some projects without compromising those balances that were already in place. And, and that's about as good as I can give you as an answer for that particular timeframe, because of course that was prior to my coming into, into town. The other thing I want to say is, we, we are operating in a different paradigm right now. And we've talked about this a lot. Typically, it's in the budget sessions, wherein we don't even give you a capital proposal without the dollars already being on hand.
Right.
And that was not the case back in those days. Yes, they had dollars on hand from previous one cent cycles, but they did not operate in the same paradigm that we do, where we don't even give you a capital agenda if the dollars on hand is not there to support it in a real-time basis, if you will, if you understand what I'm saying.
I do.
Yeah. And so a couple of different dynamics. Hence the reason we're a little concerned about the stark comparison with regard to what we're looking at for one cent sixteen and what we've seen in the past, because five million is a lot different than twenty-six million bucks in the bank, you know, in this one revenue category alone. That's kind of the point that we're trying to make from a staff perspective and, you know, our reality. Because most of the money that you see from previous cycles, it's no longer there because you've built streets, you've rebuilt Hoganon, you've, you've done a lot of things with those monies primarily aimed at infrastructure kinds of needs. And, and that was the right thing to do, but those dollars are about gone. I think from that balance right there alone, there's two point nine million dollars left. And that's it.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Thank you, Pete.
So if we could, Mr. Mayor, if, I'd like to bring back that spreadsheet that we used for the most part in the last conversation that we had a week or two weeks ago, whatever it was. You'll recognize it. It looks a lot like that. Yes, absolutely. This is the spreadsheet that we used to, you know, lay out the allocation in comparison to the set of directives that we had at that time received. You'll notice that we also have that reference column of one cent sixteen as well. Didn't really figure into the calculus, if you will, pertaining to the empirical model we were trying to put together for you. I, I would like to have you look at that, but understand we've got a proposal we want to bring to your attention that, you know, I think has some strengths, but I also think has some weaknesses, like any proposal does. I had the opportunity to reach out to a number of you in the interim period. You, you would also be favored to note that I didn't have the opportunity to essentially draw a census from this council as to a proposal to bring forward to you tonight. So I got some feedback, I got, I threw some ideas around, and I got ideas back, for sure. The ideas for you to consider, based on that sort of informal series of discussions, and I've had a lot of feedback from many of you, you know, in, in a number of areas as it relates to this, is as follows. And again, remember the thing about strengths and weaknesses, okay? Every model has strengths and weaknesses. It just does, unfortunately. We are proposing that if you remove half of the swimming subsidy, that if you remove the design from the fire department numbers, and, and again, I, I didn't give you numbers, that would mean six hundred and fifty thousand from the swimming side, a million dollars from the fire department side.
They're out there, Carter.
Oh, are they? Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. Good deal. Thank you, Pete.
I'm going to get your readers for Christmas.
I don't need your readers. And six hundred thousand dollars from the technology side, that was primarily that corpus of money that we were using for match dollars for the technology grant that we talked about, you all of a sudden come up with two point two five million dollars that we would propose could be considered for the nonprofit assistance category, the likes of which did not exist in the previous spreadsheet. We're just kind of setting it apart, so you can kind of keep an eye on that number if in fact there's some, you know, bartering that takes place this evening. I would ask, however, that with regard to the major projects that are being impacted by the deductions that I'm proposing right now, that indeed you allow me to advocate to you the completion of those projects nonetheless. So for example, for the million bucks that we, you know, tried to plug in on the fire department's behalf for Station One, we need to get that design done. And I really don't want to wait until one cent eighteen to try to get started. And, and hopefully the chief can appreciate that as well, and I'm, and I know he does, because he's, he's advocated very effectively for the needs that Station One has. So that means, with regard to that five million dollars that we have in anticipated overages, I would appeal to you to use that as a funding source to make that happen.
Bruce.
Why would we bet on the come when we don't know it's coming, and we don't do that, and not use the two point nine that we have sitting in there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, very, very fair question. The, the other thing that you should be aware of, even though I, I have my sights on this pocket of money as well, is you do have dollars available in the opportunity fund. And in, in, you know, in, in my opinion, and with regard to what I would advocate to you, the money that we receive from that overage cash flow should be backfilled in to the opportunity fund. Now, yes, there's still a little bit of the betting on the come kind of thing, but, but the reality is that five million dollars is conservative, because you don't get much from me besides conservative estimations, right? And Jill's team, and, and so on. So I'm pretty comfortable that you will at least have that, but if you don't, the opportunity dollars in a very similar amount is already there.
As a follow-up, I think we stick with the opportunity fund, but we don't even talk about that five million. You've got a paradigm that you work within, and I don't think we should step out of it because you start doing it once, you're going to do it again. And we don't, we only do stuff with cash on hand. You've said that yourself.
Absolutely.
So as far as I'm concerned, we can do that, but it comes from the opportunity fund. And if we get lucky enough and that money comes in, we can replenish the opportunity fund with it. And if it doesn't, we've lost nothing, because we bet on the opportunity fund. I, I just think that's a really dangerous precedent for us to set. And I would think you, being conservative like I am, would agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, I really don't have a problem with that at all. I, I think leveraging the opportunity fund is, is, is fine. Yeah.
Joy, did you have something?
Just fine.
Never mind. I'll come back to it.
Okay.
The other thing that I would propose that needs to be keeping moving is the technology project. We took your council goals very seriously. This is one of those that I believe is a direct outcome of your council goals, as well as the number of meetings that we had on a face-to-face basis with a number of your business leaders in the community, who said that this fiber install, that this project represents, is absolutely what they need in order to keep their businesses not only vibrant, but actually operating on a day-to-day basis, the struggles of which they are currently experiencing, given the, the, the existing technology that's in place right now. The other thing that I would have you remember is that in the budget, we did talk about a, a, a project in the neighborhood of two million dollars, and we offset that expense with a grant that we, you know, would hope to get. You know, from our discussions from the budget process, that that funding source was ARBA. We have been doing research very vigorously since that time. And, you know, unfortunately, much like a number of things that occur here, Casper is probably not as well-suited for those funds as would say a much more smaller and more rural community would be, and probably is. And so unless we find something that is bananas-good news about what those dollars can be applied to with respect to this particular project, I'm likely going to advocate the opportunity fund to give us that project and get it done, so that we can take advantage of the cost benefits that we are seeing right now with regard to the bids that we benefits that we're seeing right now with regard to the bids that we have in hand and the value engineering that is actively underway, and get that thing done so that we can get relief to our businesses and allow that Opportunity Fund to leverage that for us.
I've got Lisa real quick. Bruce, hold on.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the infrastructure bill that the feds are eventually supposedly going to release, isn't their fiber tied into those?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, you are absolutely correct, but there is also that nuance and caveat that says it's for underserved rural communities. And we believe we would have a pretty heavy lift that would likely take us a year or more to present, given the rules and things that are in place right now, to make that argument. And I'm just being completely candid, I don't think our prospects are good, but I think that project is critical. And I'm saying if one cent isn't gonna help us, let us use the Opportunity Fund to get it done. And we'll continue to work on the pricing so that it's way more competitive than it would be a year to 18 months from now.
Bruce, thank you. You guys obviously did your homework, and I appreciate that. You found a way to make this happen. The only thing I'd like to see different is, if we're gonna go this far, I'd hate to give up the 600,000 on the swimming subsidy, and I'll tell you why. When we gave up that, when we raised rates 50 cents at the Aquatic Center, you remember what that did?
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that our community can absorb that 600,000 personally. And if we can go this far, why can't we just get it done and be done?
Carter, if we had to find that 600,000 for that, is that gonna be a heavy lift?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for that comment. That definitely is the aspect of this recommendation that hurts the most, because it effectively means we are taking money out of current operations to fund outside agencies. I mean, that is what it boils down to. And I'm sure that people will parse those comments that are listening to this conversation till the cows come home, but that's what that amounts to. Because unless we are willing to make that up in rates, it comes out of the general fund. And then that means the general fund subsidy into aquatics grows where it's been kept artificially low, if you will, because of the presence of one cent since at least one cent thirteen. So I have a deep appreciation for that proposal. The problem is, what that means is, we gotta go into our hard projects here to make some decisions in order to free up that balance otherwise.
But what do you mean it, it would come out, it would go to other entities? Because those are our pools, those are our constituents using. So I'm not following that train of thought that you're...
Mr. Mayor, all I'm trying to say is that we would be trading money out of the general fund to make up that loss in subsidy, which would be historically low, probably 20 years back, is what I mean, in the operations of the general fund.
But if my numbers are right, we've got it, based on the Opportunity Fund and what will possibly be coming in to replace that, we have that. So it wouldn't have to come out of the general fund, in my estimation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, if indeed you were to allow me to use reserves to make up an operational expense, then yeah, you're right. But I've never brought you a recommendation that says we need to use reserves to make up for a general fund expense. And so that would be completely uncharacteristic of the way this council's done business.
Well, I guess if we, just as a follow-up, if we, at least half a subsidy's better than no subsidy. And that, I mean, I, right? Something's gotta give, so...
Lisa, and then Carter.
I appreciate your work, Carter.
Thank you, thank you.
My concern about not subsidizing the pools is this, is this that we've already been looking at them and talking about closing pools and everything else, we've already heard this for the last several weeks. If we start charging that much more, then the attendance is going down, and then we're going to come back several years later and say, well, nobody's showing up at the pools, close them all. And so, you know, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy, kind of the thing. And so I do think that we need to try to see if we can figure out a way to subsidize the pools, because that is one of the major things that the families do during the summertime. And also I would propose the pool in North Casper at least charge a dollar fifty something, a portion of what everybody else, I don't think that that pool should be free. Maybe not being charged what Mike Cedar's doing, but it shouldn't be free.
Councilwoman, I completely appreciate where you're coming from. And like I said, the pool subsidy, if you will, is likely the most painful of the recommendations because of the impact it has on year-in, year-out, general fund obligations that we would lose the chance to be able to absorb or meet the obligations of. So my secondary proposal would be this, and, you know, hopefully you're okay with the fact that we took a little bit of liberty to assume that maybe you wouldn't like the pool subsidy. We don't want to leave you without options, right? Zulema and I have talked quite a bit, and I hate that Zulema is the fulcrum of the majority of these discussions, because she has very important projects that frankly have been left off the table for a long, long time. And that's why you see her proposal being higher than what you've seen historically, because we've got a lot of deferred maintenance. Unfortunately, what I'm about to recommend means we're gonna continue to defer maintenance on a number of things in order to help out with this equation. And so, Zulema, can I appeal to you to walk us through what happens if 650,000 dollars is removed from one of your proposals? Is that okay?
Do you bet, Mr. Mayor?
Do you want me to go through all or start with? How would you like to choose?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I think what I'd like to see, Zulema, is where you think that would be the least painful in recommending a slice of 650,000 dollars.
How about split the difference at 325?
Yeah, why not?
What is this?
Just this?
Yes.
The facilities with the hand power?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'd like to start out by saying I think that we would be hardest hit to try to attack individual projects within any of the other rec areas. You know, we have very important, specific projects that we need to complete at the Ford Wyoming Center and at Fort Casper Museum, which encompasses the culture and entertainment kind of bucket of dollars. We have significant needs in parks that, quite frankly, will not be fulfilled with the funding that we are going to get. So I cannot propose that we cut parks any further or trails any further than we already have. And then with regard to, what's my last one? Oh, we've talked about aquatics, which is why we're here. So I believe that the best proposal is to look at the facilities ask, which was significant. And we had a lot of research done, you know, in the form of our facility condition assessment. They gave us data that, quite frankly, we didn't have before. And it gave us a great starting point to identify the areas of need in all of our city facilities, or at least the three primary facilities that got the full-blown kind of analysis and narrative reports. And it gave us a great place to start in terms of what we need to start attacking to sort of eat this moment that we have in front of us, some proposed 100 million dollars worth of needs in the next five years. So my proposal is this, our original one-cent ask for facilities was somewhere in the vicinity of, I don't know, it was 5,095,000 dollars. Yeah, pretty close to 6 million dollars. And it looked at all of the highest priority areas of need in all of the facilities that are general fund facilities, so did not include the utility facilities, for instance, that are part of enterprise funds. And so in revisiting that, and Flor, I guess to just remind them, maybe we could go to the first tab, so this is the spreadsheet that I presented you guys with, to let you know, things in gray were per the facility condition assessment identified as medium priority items. Low priority items weren't even included to consider. And then the sort of concealed systems, we took the strategy of saying, okay, we know we're gonna have to do some additional analysis to really determine the condition of our piping that's behind walls or in the ceilings or underground, right? And so we would go through that analysis, primarily utilizing city staff and some equipment purchases that we asked you for support for. And then we would have a better idea. And then we're assuming that a certain percentage of the estimates provided by the facility condition assessment would be needed to address repairs or areas of concern that we find in that further analysis. So admittedly, we were utilizing a strategy that's holding on to valuable funds for the what-ifs that may come. And as you heard from the Housing Authority, that's what you kind of gotta do, because things are gonna break, you're gonna have challenges that you have to address. And historically, we haven't had a good source of funding to address those without significant struggle in coming to council and saying, whoa, we might have money in the Opportunity Fund, or we might have money in perpetual care, or whatever. So to kind of move this story along, what I am proposing is that we actually change this HVAC distribution, cleaning and repair figure, and reduce it to the amount that we would need to cover subsidized swimming, for a couple of different reasons. One, the facility condition assessment identified this as a medium priority. And the reasons for that are because you're talking your ductwork and you're talking your air handlers. And although air handlers certainly are expensive propositions, the chance of a catastrophic failure that's gonna completely take down a heating or cooling is pretty low. So you're not gonna be efficient, your other components within the system are gonna work harder if your ductwork is not in good shape or your air handler is not in good shape, but it's likely not gonna shut down a building. Okay? So if we reduce this ask, we are still funding money for the primary components in HVAC, which are our boilers or chillers and our control systems, and we will retain some of the ability to do some further evaluation here. But we'll be able, this ask was 1.6 million dollars along, in taking 25% of the estimated cost to clean all the ductwork and really do some analysis and figure out what we need to do further. So we prepared, Pete, help me to prepare a handout, so if you go to the handout, and then zoom out so they can kind of see. So the new request would actually change because we don't need to take the full 1.6 million dollars out, we only need 600,000, 625, right, 650?
650.
Okay, for pools. So then we would reduce that 1.6 million dollar ask that was original to the 650, and then what you're looking at is specific projects, sorry, Flor, specific projects for roofs. We know those are gonna happen, we have to replace the roofs. Many of these roofs were actually proposed in one cent fifteen and got punted, now eight years later, they still need to be replaced. But note that only 50,000 dollars for Fire Station One, that is a reduction to just really keep that roof functioning until that building can be replaced. So that's not a full replacement, that is just necessary repairs to keep it going. Then we also know elevators will need to be replaced. So the passenger elevator at Ford Wyoming Center needs to be upgraded so that we know it'll last another 40 years, as does the passenger elevator here at City Hall. And for ADA compliance reasons, we can't lose those, for, you know, multiple reasons, we can't lose those. So we need to invest these funds, we know that for sure. These are the dollars that I'm asking you to set aside, possibly in perpetual care, to fund what we are going to find, what is going to break, what our analysis is gonna identify as areas that are close to failure, so that we can address those items. And one proposal is that rather than just having those dollars sit idly, we enhance perpetual care with those dollars, allow that to gain interest like the other perpetual care dollars do. And then when I have that need, I'm gonna come to you and say, I need it for a major facility repair.
Bruce.
Which would take you to, on a medium risk, you're still gonna have 16% or 15%, I'm guessing, little over 16% instead of 25%, you're still gonna have that funding. So I'm assuming that, and based on some of those other ones that were at 10% or even 15%, you're probably still gonna be just fine, based on the rest of your chart, right?
I do believe so. I believe we will find areas that will need to be improved to prevent some catastrophic failure. And honestly, we've been there. We've, you know, Ford Wyoming Center had a water line break in a restroom that actually flooded the Ford Wyoming Center in the middle of a graduation. We had a power failure during state marching band. So we have already had some catastrophic failures. You guys know, we had to replace boilers at Metro, we've had to have major improvements without a dedicated funding source. And so that's what this will provide for me, I hope, with your approval, is just dedicating these dollars to facility needs that we come across in the next four years.
I like that a lot better, and I like the fact that we can keep the subsidy in place, and it's just so important for those families. So this seems like a much better approach, if you will. So thanks for doing the homework. I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with me, but that seems like a win to me.
I think the point that I wanted to, that I wanna make is that, I think we knew coming in here, no matter what it was gonna be for us to do this, the staff is gonna have to do some wrangling, and at some point, we're gonna have to compromise and know that there's gonna be a cut, whether it's on the subsidies in the pools, whether it's Zulema taking a hit on some of this stuff. But I think it's a question of having to take that and understand that if we wanna, we're interested in trying to help with this, the grant program, and we're interested in trying to salvage that to some extent. And we know that it's not gonna be closer to the 3 million, but we know we're gonna get pretty close, and we're gonna try to do our best to do that, and it's just a question of sometimes there's gonna be some sacrifices and some compromise. Not easy, it's like making sausage.
You said this was your third, this is only my second, you had to do one while I was gone.
That's right.
But I know when we initially did that first one together, we talked about some of these nonprofits of funding them on a step-down schedule to where they would start to become self-sufficient, rather than just going, no. And so is there any thought in this money, and this is kind of to everybody, is there any thought in any of this with the money that we are saving or gonna expend to where we're going to try to allocate that in a step-down phase so they can start trying to, over the next four years, increase their private funding, private fundraising, basically, and try to get them to where they're becoming more self-sufficient? You know, I mean, that's what we're doing with all of our other facilities, that's what we're looking at with our baseball structures, with our Hogdon rates, that's what we've actually been talking about with our pool rates, that's what we're talking about with Ford Wyoming Center. Why aren't we talking about that with our 503Cs?
You know, I think what I, how I see it is, tonight is, how do we, how do we create funding for the grant program? Then when we start to create the program, then we have that conversation, which will happen, how do we do it? And I think that's a separate work session, a separate conversation, because I think that needs to be a part of it, Steve. But I think the conversation really is, tonight is about, how did we, how do we make those compromises, how do we make some cuts here and there to save some of that funding? Joy?
So I have a couple of questions, so if we're talking about, you know, finding the money and thinking, you know, critically about where it can come from, I just wanna say thank you. This is really hard, we want everybody to get what they This is really hard. We want everybody to get what they need, right? So in the spirit of, of compromises, I mean, we're, we're asking Zulima to look at this. We're asking to find the money for the fire station design in a different, from a different place. We're asking to, to figure out how to do the fiber project still. So, so we're getting creative and I, I'm trying to look at some of our other buckets here. And so as it relates to the grant program, I'm looking at our, our police, our proposed police budget. And I see 5.35 million dollars for police vehicles. Is there opportunity to get creative with that $350,000? Is there some place that we could find some money there? So that's one question. Can I also add just another point to that too? Okay. So then this is not grant program related, but I just don't want to miss the opportunity to remember that I'd like to suggest that that armored emergency vehicle line item be moved to Metro for facility design or facility needs assessment and potentially some sort of recalibration or, or work to create a better living environment for the animals that are there. So I just don't want to lose that. But those were my questions.
So the first point, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, thank you for bringing that up. The Metro facility is a huge leave off, if you will, of this whole proposal. They need more attention out there at that building than perhaps many of the ones that we've talked about. The Bearcat is actually what you referred to, right? Not police cars.
No, that, well, there's two suggestions I have. So the armored vehicle for Metro, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Because I, I really would plead with you not to change the police car rotation. The chief has been very creative about getting us to this point. And I think it would be detrimental for his operation to, to make it worse. So I'm, I'm focusing on the Bearcat. If, if indeed there is the possibility of advocating to you the consideration of that piece of equipment from another means, I'll advocate for that all day long because that, that police safety is, is pretty critical for me. Particularly given the environment that we're working in right now. And diverting those funds from a proposal standpoint to Metro, while hugely insufficient, it is something. But I would contend that the 150,000 is probably more what we're talking about if indeed we allow the chief to pursue the, you know, gently used option compared to the brand new option in four years or whatever it is. So, and, and, you know, whether we're talking 150 or 350 for Metro, we're still far, far below the eight ball. Because again, they, they've been neglected. That building has passed its useful life for sure and it does need some help.
Bruce.
I've been one of the biggest advocates for the police department from day one. And I mean, I fought and fought and fought for that building. And, but as far as this armored vehicle goes, he budgeted 375. If he can truly get one for 150, at least $225,000 on the table. Why aren't we pulling that out and say, okay, if you want it, you find it for 150 like you said you could and get that 225 back in the mix, whether it goes to Metro or wherever. And if you can't get one for 150, then I guess you don't get it because the county's got one. And if we need it, we can get it, just like Mills used it. So would I like him to have his own? Absolutely. And if he can get it for the 150, like he said, then let's do that. But let's get that 225 back in the mix and throw it on Metro. Because it's, we're asking for money we don't need, apparently, allegedly. Does that make sense to you, Carter?
Yeah, go ahead. Do you want to say something? Yes, along the lines of this Bearcat. Actually, if you look at it, we are only funding 150 of the Bearcat. That's all that's in here is 150 funded and 225 non-funded.
Oh, okay.
Okay? That's number one. Number two, you said we use the county one at Mills. By the same token, in that Mills incident, they wound up to...
Evansville.
Evansville, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. In that incident, they wound up with that vehicle on one side of the building and they wound up with police officers on the other side of the building with their shields. And those police officers on the other side of that building started to become the targets of the person in the building. And they wound up with boots being shot off, things like this. And so that particular incident was putting those officers in a lot more peril by not having one of those than if they would have had two of them because they could have positioned that other one opposite it. And it would have been just like prisons or anything else with the two.
I get it. But you have to also understand, out of 15 or 20 comments, whatever was on social media, not one of our constituents was in favor of our police department having an armored vehicle. Not one. So keep that in mind, that we are here to represent them, not us. Because if it's up to me, every policeman would have an armored door, armored glass, and an armored vehicle. But that's, but it's not up to me.
15 out of 60,000.
It's 20 out of the 20 that responded, just like on our survey. There was only 750, but they represent the 60,000. So, you know, like I said, if we're going to split hairs and we got to cut here and we got to cut there and there is an armored vehicle available to the city currently, do we need one? That's the question.
So I'm going to let Carter respond to that, then I think we need to move forward from the armored emergency vehicle.
Thank you. There's the, the, the proposal, just as a refresher. Councilman Cathy's correct. We're really at this point only looking for 150. I would like to come back to you to talk about that project, if in fact you'll give me that space and authority to do so. And I would absolutely support 150 going to Metro. Again, hugely underfunded facility.
Yeah, just one last comment. It's kind of like Zulima's situation because it's all under him. It's all under the chief. So he may have to kind of do what she did and maybe do a little, you know, I don't know. I'm just, it's just a, an observation based on what she had to do.
We will bring a proposal, absolutely.
Zulima, do you have any else, anything else?
I don't, unless you have other questions.
Any other questions about Zulima? On the, her working around it?
Thank you.
You will. Thank you, Zulima.
We threw you under the bus last time. I think we, you pulled yourself back out on this one. Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, just to be abundantly clear, unless Pete has already altered this, the new proposed column is what we're suggesting for the 64.5. Obviously, you've made some adjustments. That 650 instead would come out of Zulima's category, the name of which escapes me at this point. I believe it's public building request, right? Thank you. And swimming subsidy under community assistance would be restored. The other nuance to this proposal would be the 150 that would come out of PD's, you know, rolling stock line item and be diverted instead to PD's building project, more specifically with Metro. And we'll bring a proposal for that too, so you know exactly how that would be spent if 1 cent 17 is to pass. Keep in mind also that we don't start collecting these dollars until March of next year if this passes. So we're really talking about an FY '24 budget implication and then the four years thereafter. So FY '23, no impact with regard to what we talked about tonight, just to be clear.
So it sounds like we have a proposal that we can somewhat give a tentative thumbs up based upon what just Carter, what Carter just said, with a little over, what, 2.2 million for the grant program? Thank you. Looks like we salvaged the subsidy for the swimming pool, thanks to Zulima. And everything else stays in the 2, 200, 2.25 for nonprofit contracts. Is that fair? Yes, Zulima. All right, Zulima. My brain, sorry. Jai, sorry, of course, Zulima's been...
Okay, so, uh, thank you for doing the work on here. I was just curious, oh, oh, the number changed. Never mind. Well, I thought I saw a different number in the, in line 23, wherever you were just a minute ago. But it's back at 3 million. It looked like it was like 2.2 or something. But that was because of the, okay, got it, got it. Okay, never mind.
Amber's not on either, is she? Yeah. Yeah. And I haven't got my text for anything. So that sounds like it's the tentative proposal. How does council feel, I guess? I know we have had, yeah, yeah, Bruce.
I, I just want to say, and I don't think the council's made any decisions on the police vehicle. I don't, I'm not, I don't think we're saying the chief's not getting it or whatever. I think we're just kind of, you're going to bring us something and then, okay.
Yeah, we're going to put a sticky note on that to bring it back.
Okay.
And have that conversation, I think, as we go through that with the proposal.
I do think based on the, the people that I've talked to and that have reached out to me and the endless amount of emails that I've gotten, I think they're going to be pleased with what has transpired here tonight. I think the fact that we got some money into that grant program, saved the, the swimming subsidy. And, you know, I, I think people are going to be really happy with this. I, we, this is a tough job and I think everybody understands that. And this seems like a really, really good compromise all the way around.
If Congress could just work like this.
Yeah, no kidding, huh? If Congress had us in their seats, they'd probably be a lot better off.
Thanks, Mayor. No questions about it. I'm feeling a lot better about this. I hope everyone views it as a fair compromise. I know we didn't get to the 3 million that was offered historically. But to reiterate what I mentioned at our last meeting, our last work session, I hope this illustrates the difficulty we have on council, finding this money. We're still taking, water and sewer subsidy is still taking a hit. Zulima's having to, you know, find workarounds. We still, this is just to maintain streets, not even begin to improve them. They're terrible. So I feel like I'm compromising personally myself on that one. And so I, I hope this just illustrates to people that, as Carter mentioned, strengths, weaknesses, somebody's sacrificing. We're trying to do our best to make sure everybody, the burden of that sacrifice is kind of shared equally. I think that's fair. But everyone's sacrificing in some way, whether it's us, you know, deferring maintenance. Like I said, I don't even want to entertain reducing our capital agenda for water and sewer and stuff like that because I already feel like they're a little bit too, you know, I don't think they're quite as realistic as they should be and stuff like that. And so we're still not where we're at, but I hope this is a fair compromise. And everybody that was paying attention to the process, I hope, you know, they feel like we did a good job kind of exploring all options.
All right, great. I'll reserve my comments till around the table. I don't need them to be brief. Maybe 20, 22, 23 minutes. All right, thank you, everyone. Agenda review.
Mr. Mayor, so just to be clear.
I'm sorry.
It would be my proposal then that we prepare a resolution based on what you worked on tonight. Is that fair?
Sorry, I didn't get a thumbs up.
Hey, that's, that's...
I wondered that.
Help you out.
Yeah. So can I get a thumbs up on this to prepare resolution? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. All right, let's move to agenda review. Have anything, Carter?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, anything for legislative review?
And nothing there.
Yes. Counsel around the table. Sean.
No, I don't have anything. I yield my time to the gentleman.
I'll take it.
Go.
Thanks, Mayor. I had a great time at the parade today. Got to take my daughter on the fire truck and shoot some fine residents with water guns. She loved it. So, in fact, being honest, I really liked it too. A lot of kids asking for it. I was happy to give it to them. So yeah, it was a beautiful day. Just thank you for everyone that came out to the parade, for everyone that was involved in the parade. Thank you to, you know, Fire Chief Black, Renee, Flor, everyone on the city staff level that helps make it happen. I'm thankful, appreciative. It was a good experience. And then I also want to just recognize Casper Fire VMS for a couple of things, for kind of providing oversight and managing, you know, the fires. I saw there was a couple that, you know, touchdowns from the fireworks festival. And so you guys were quick on it, got it put out. So I appreciate your help with the fireworks festival. And also there was an incident, I believe it was yesterday, of a couple of citizens getting lost from their boat at the Whitewater Park. And it sounds like we had some folks on the scene already doing training. And so they were able to take advantage of the opportunity and help some people who otherwise may have been in a very bad spot. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Lisa.
I'm just going to touch on, I've had several citizens contact me regarding the water situation, the cutoff. And so I did meet with the water department. So I just kind of wanted to explain because I know that one of the media outlets had a baby underwater and saying they're going to cut your water off. So that's not exactly how that's going to go. It's going to be, so essentially, say your bill is due July 1st. They mail it out, the bill is due July 31st. Then on August 1st, you're going to get a delinquent notice. And then on August 8th, they're going to give you an automatic phone call saying you have a delinquent bill. And then on around August 16th, then the bill, then your water will be turned off with approximately around the 16th. Then you'll be charged just the $20 assessed. You're right at the moment, we're not assessing late fees or no reinstatement fees. And then, and the reason why they're starting to do this was because in 2020, they stopped turning off the water. Well, we have quite a few citizens who have just decided to just not pay their bills. And so this is why we had to do mass shut offs in May because they're not catching up on their bills. The water department, if you qualify, will do some payment arrangements for you. But they are trying to encourage citizens to get caught up from 20 to 2020 to 2021. And people need to get caught up on their bills so that the city is not subsidizing everybody's water bills. So that's what I've got.
Where we are.
Thank you.
Not subsidizing them further.
Bruce.
Well, thanks. I think I'll touch on that as well because I got a few calls. And I, I take the stance that it is not up to the taxpayers, me, or anybody else to pay your bills for you. We live in a society where everyone's got a thousand dollar iPhone and they've got hundred thousand dollar trucks in their driveways and their kids are wearing the nice shoes. When I wore Safeway tennis shoes growing up because my parents didn't have money. If you don't want your water shut off, pay your bill. It's not up to the city or the taxpayers to pay your bills for you. So I also enjoyed the parade very much. My daughter got to ride and shoot and that was, that was really awesome. Kudos to the mayor and the vice mayor. They walked the entire route, animals. I would think they'd want to be in bed. They probably do. And here I am, rattling on after walking all day. But I was also, you know, there was a lot of political stuff going on at the parade because we have elections coming up, which reminded me that we're going to lose some of our, our council people. I know Mr. Johnson's not rerunning, Mr. Freel's not. We have two others that are running for reelection. And the dynamics of this council is going to change significantly. And I talked about it with Carter today. This has been such a really enjoyable thing for me. And I'm generally of butted heads with just about everybody on here. But at the end of the day, we shake hands and we respect each other. And it's just been so nice to work with such a fine group of people. So for those of you that are leaving, I will certainly miss you. And this council and the city will as well. So I wish you well in your future endeavors. I hope that you both get the elections you're after because you'll do great there, just like you did here.
Jai.
Thanks. I enjoyed the parade as well. Had two kids spraying everybody from the top of the fire truck today, including our mayor and vice mayor, every opportunity they got. I'm going to blame Steve for that, who was encouraging him to spray me. So I'm just glad it wasn't me until the end. But no, that was really fun. Thanks to everybody who was, who was there. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate, you know, going in deeper to 1 cent and, and just realizing, you know, how critical this is for our community from getting the job done perspective. I wish we were at 3 million for the, the grant program. And I hope that as we get more strategic, we just make those dollars that we do have as meaningful as we possibly can. And maybe there's opportunity to enhance that program moving forward. But I just hope we can do it right and do it well so that we continue to prove that it's important to our community. But I appreciate, we're all making compromises and we're all trying to look out for our constituents in meaningful ways. So I appreciate that. Really like this council and I like working with all of you. So thanks.
Steve. Well, as I told Jai when I was visiting with her youngsters, I said, I'm playing grandpa. Squirt her. And that's what grandpas are supposed to do. The other thing is I visited with... The other thing is I visited with the chief, and after seeing what the airport fire rescue was doing, I said, "Maybe we needed to figure out a way to up our game a little bit on, on the crowd." And he kind of grinned and said, "Whatever," and he's shaking his head, yes. But beyond that, it was a great day. I thought there was an above-average turnout for the parade, which I was glad to see the citizens come out. And I want to thank everybody here that put together and helped put together the presentations and the revisions and everything else. Everybody says it's hard on us. It was hard on all of you. I want to thank you all for the work you did. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
The only thing I have tomorrow night is politics in the park for all the city council members. So Washington Park, I think, starts at 4:30, goes till 7:00. I know I'm running for it, but it's four city councils. So anyway, tomorrow night, city council members, Washington Park. I already did mine last week, so anyways, 4:30 to 7:00 tomorrow.
They don't allow my kind of those things for crime events. Yes, Steve and I walked, which was great. We had a good time doing that. And I wanted to thank the chief for his work and helping us get that organized with Flor and the city staff to be able to do that. Also, the drivers, appreciate them. They were so, really, really good. I mean, all of them, just really good. Took care of, took real good care of us. I wanted to thank the city staff, especially Zulima tonight, and the work that's been done, putting this together and so forth. And so I know we've been here a long time, so I'm not going to belabor anything. I've come to the realization that when politics and government works, it works because we have to work together and make compromises. And I know there are a lot of people that say, "Well, if you make compromises, you give away your values." And I don't think that's the case. I think you can have your values, you can stand by your values, but I think you can make compromises for the betterment of the community. And while it wasn't $3 million and super supportive of the nonprofits, we came to it as close as we possibly could with the work that we're doing. And that, we can, we can walk out of this room tonight with the idea that we did the best that we could for the betterment of our community. And that's the reason why we're on city council. So I appreciate everybody's hard work, being able to do that. I know a lot of people wanted to probably try to cap something for the rodeo or for the fair and how we get ready for, you know, parade day, but we're working hard. And I know there are a lot of people enjoying their night, and we're here doing this, and the staff doing it and being here as well. So thank you. I appreciate it. Very grateful to be a part of this council, so thank you.
And Ray's cooking dinner for everybody.
Barbecue pacheco.
Nobody, nobody said the county fair is in full swing.
Yes, thank you.
Rodeos, carnival, it's all, it's all going. So get out and enjoy.
And thank you to Carter for all this.
I got to go tomorrow night with last.
I did, I did my part.
I wish I was...
I go for a sleep.